Is the council ready? Good evening. It's a pleasure to welcome you to our city council meeting tonight. And as you may know, this is a consolidated meeting where we have the city council, the Buena Sanitation District Agenda, as well as our Community Development Commission Agenda. And this meeting is officially called to order and we'll ask the city clerk to acknowledge the fact that all the city council members are here.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
Good. If you'd join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation, that will be offered by Joseph Schultz, Supreme Master of the Knights of Columbus, and if you'd remain standing after the Pledge of Allegiance for the invocation.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you join with me in honoring our flag by facing it, placing your hand over your heart and saying with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all." We begin our activities here today by acknowledging our Creator, who, as our Declaration of Independence reminds us, is the source of our unalienable rights as American citizens. Almighty God, we pray for the elected representatives of the people of the city of Vista, California, as they gather today to serve our community. We give thanks for the many gifts you have bestowed upon our nation and our community. We pray that as the members of the city council go about their work in a few moments, they will be mindful of the needs of all, especially those who are less fortunate. We ask that you grant each of them the wisdom, strength, and perseverance they may need to overcome any obstacles to serving our community. We ask you to bless them with opportunities to serve the causes of justice and mercy. We also ask your blessing for the men and women of our armed forces who are deployed in harm's way, and for their families, many of whom are our neighbors. We pray especially for those who are stationed in the Middle East, that they may be granted success in their missions of bringing peace and freedom to those troubled lands. We ask finally that you will grant each of us wisdom and courage as we work together to build a society that is just, caring, and respectful of the essential human dignity that you have given us all. Amen.
Thank you very much. All be seated. I notice that we have a number of students here, and I imagine you're all from Rancho Buena Vista High School. Is that true? Oh, welcome. We hope that you...
This couple said no.
This couple said no? Well anyhow, all of you there are welcome, whether it's Rancho Buena Vista, Vista, or whatever. So, thank you for coming, and we hope you enjoy the meeting tonight. Next, we have the approval of the agenda. Are there any items that need to be added to the agenda or deleted from the agenda?
There are no additions or deletions, Mayor.
Okay, very good. We did have a closed session prior to this meeting with the city council, and we'll ask the city attorney to give a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the council did meet in closed session to discuss the item listed as CS-1 on today's closed session agenda. Discussion was had, but no action was taken that is required to be disclosed at this time.
Okay, there's a rumor that we held an election here in November, and so we're going to officially recognize the results of that election, so I'll turn the time over to our city clerk, Marcy Killian.
The registrar of voters' certified results of the November 4th, 2008 general municipal election shows that Frank Lopez Jr. and Steve Gronky have been re-elected to the city council for four-year terms. If the city council will adopt the resolution declaring the election results, we can step down and ask our new council members to take the oath of office.
Okay, do we have a motion? To move?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and if you'll please cast your votes. Pardon? Sure you vote for yourself. Unless you don't want to serve. Okay, I think, did everyone... Oh, my gosh, it's unanimous. Okay, I think there's a swearing-in that needs to take place now, so if those two council members will join Marcy in the audience.
And repeat after me, after I say aye, then you say your own names. Okay, aye. Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, and that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. There you go. Congratulations.
Okay, we're going to take a ten to fifteen-minute recess to congratulate these new council members, and so we'll be back in ten to fifteen minutes. Begin the meeting. Boy, this is exciting. We haven't had this many people at the city council meeting in about a year or two. It's good to see you all here. Well, boy, we better be careful. We have a real contingency of firefighters with us tonight, and they're here out of the goodness of their hearts. They volunteered to come to the meeting this evening, so we're happy to have them with us tonight. I'm only kidding. They're here because it's part of their duty, and they're required to be here, but anyhow, we appreciate them being here nevertheless. Okay, we all here? Let's get started then. After the... We have three presentations that we'd like to make under presentations. Number two, number three, and number five. Number four, we've already made the presentation to Mark Leon. So if I could ask Kim Crawford and Natalie Livingston and Daniel Schultz to come and join me at the podium. You here? Okay. Okay. Each year, we make various awards to our employees for the good things that are the exceptional, I should say, the exceptional things that they've done during the year. Now, a little earlier this afternoon, I made a presentation to an individual that doesn't like crowds, so he chose to have his this afternoon, and it was the Mayor's Award of Excellence. And so these three awards I'm going to make tonight are awards that were given to employees for exceptional service to the city and to the citizens of the community. The first one will be to Daniel Schultz. Okay, and I'm going to read the proclamations because it tells you exactly what they're being given this award for. It says, "Whereas one of the year's recipients of the mayor's excellence in service award is Daniel Schultz. Daniel is a meal delivery driver in the recreation and community services department, and whereas Daniel is being recognized for exhibiting true professionalism each day when he is required to deliver many meals in a short period of time, Daniel provides much more than a meal. He is often the only person that the homebound client see day after day. And whereas through his caring nature and sense of humor, Daniel has developed special relationships with those he serves, he maintains a balance between delivering meals on schedule and spending time to interact. Whereas Daniel is the personification of a well-rounded employee and acts as a customer service role model for all other employees, he may work behind the scenes but has made a huge impact in the community he serves. Whereas the Vista City Council thanks Daniel for his leadership and dedication to the city of Vista. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council wish to congratulate Daniel Schultz and to hereby proclaim Saturday, November 13th, 2008, as Daniel Schultz Day in the city of Vista, and is signed by all members of the city council." Okay, next we have Natalie Livingston Day. Natalie, come on over here. It says, "Whereas Natalie Livingston was recently recognized as the city of Vista's manager of the year. Whereas this honor was in recognition of Natalie's skills and talents as manager in the recreation and community services department. Whereas Natalie has managed the Wave Water Park for the last two seasons, and during this time, the Wave has received the highest safety rating possible, the Platinum Award. Whereas under Natalie's leadership, she has made impressive improvements to the Wave, such as creatively and professionally painting the entire facility using only city staff for labor. Whereas Natalie is highly respected in the industry and has created an impressive training program with a different theme each season, Natalie is very deserving of this acknowledgement. And now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim Thursday, December 11th, 2008, as Natalie Livingston Day in the city of Vista." Now, Kim, come on over. Okay. "Whereas Kim Crawford was recently recognized as the city of Vista's employee of the year. Whereas this honor was in recognition of Kim's commitment to excellence while upholding the mission of the city of Vista and the recreation and community services department. Whereas Kim is known for her..."
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That's all right. We're okay. Come on over here. "Whereas Kim is known for interacting with customers in such a way as to turn even a negative situation into a positive experience. Her ability to adapt to the changing work environment makes Kim an integral part of the department team. And whereas Kim is a master at multitasking and making things work, she is an ideal employee from customer service to the implementation of large-scale projects. When others may balk at the magnitude or scope of the project, Kim takes it with a great, takes it on with great enthusiasm. And whereas the Vista City Council commends Kim on this honor and thanks her for being such a valuable member of the city staff, now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim Wednesday, December 10th, 2008, as Kim Crawford Day in the city of Vista. Congratulations." We have one more presentation, and that's presentation number six, and that's the Moonlight Cultural Foundation donation. So maybe the council would like to join me down there to receive this donation. We, oh, absolutely. I was going to introduce Jane. This is Jane Mitchell, who's the president of the Vista Foundation, and the Moonlight, excuse me, the Moonlight Cultural Foundation. And...
All right. Thank you. I want to thank everyone here. The Moonlight Cultural Foundation is supported by members of the community, and we have many donors here in the city council and in our audience today, and we wouldn't be able to make this presentation without all of you, so thank you all very much. We'll go ahead and make this presentation, and then I'll have a few more words to say. So, we're delighted to present $150,000 from the Moonlight Cultural Foundation on behalf of its donors and volunteers to the city of Vista for sound equipment.
We really appreciate that. As you all know, the Moonlight, the Moonlight structure is now being reconstructed, and it's going to be a beautiful facility, and it's going to have the best lighting and sound in the whole county of San Diego, if not the whole state.
And, and we are continuing to raise funds for the lighting equipment for the new stage house, so we have completed the sound portion of this, but we will be looking for everyone's assistance in raising funds for the lighting equipment for the new theater. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Mitchell, will you tell us, please, where people can call to get more information how they could participate in this?
The person to call is here on my left. This is Diana Aaron, the executive director of the Moonlight Cultural Foundation, and her number is 760-630-7650. And give her a call if you have any questions and would like to help us out with the lighting portion of the sound and lighting campaign. Or we were, you know, we work every year to support Moonlight stage productions, and we provide a part of the funding to provide the Moonlight theater experience for all of you for the whole year. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next is the consent calendar, and I've had some requests to remove some items. Item number 18 and item number 22. Are there any other items that council would like to have removed from the, oh, and also I'd like to remove item number, no, never mind, I won't. Any other items that council would like to remove?
I'd like to register a no vote on number six.
On number six. I'm going to, yeah, I am too going to remove it. I'm going to remove item number C-21. Okay, is there a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar?
I'll go ahead and make a motion for the consent calendar, mayor.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. And that's unanimous. For those in the audience, the consent calendar are those items that are normally ministerial in action, and so we group them all together, and it's a process, if there's one that we would like to remove to have further discussion, then we remove it from the agenda and do so. And that's what we're going to do right now. We're going to first of all, remove item number 18. And number 18 is the ambulance purchase. So if we could have our fire chief, please come forward. We have, let's see, I guess we, do you want to give a brief report on this before we have the gentleman come up that has pulled it from the agenda? We're purchasing an ambulance.
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, it's pretty much in the staff report. If you wanted to have the speaker come up and express concerns, then we can respond to that if you'd like.
Okay, the individual is Dick Reynolds from the Braun Northwest Incorporated. Mr. Reynolds, if you'd like to come forward to the podium, please.
Hi, my name is Dick Reynolds. I rep, I'm a factory representative for Braun Northwest out of Schehalis, Washington. I cover Southern California. We just asked for a fair hearing on this. It appears that you folks have decided to remove it from the calendar and explore it further, and that's all we ask. I have a letter that has been sent to Chief Fisher as well as the city attorney, excuse me, the city manager. I was going to read that, but I think that it'll probably be part of the records as to why you folks are resending it and to a later date. Is that correct?
No, we're not. We're just removing it to discuss it because you pulled it from the agenda.
Okay, I didn't understand what you were doing.
I'm sorry. So if there's things that you'd like to...
Yes.
To state that now's the time to do it.
Okay, I apologize.
And you have three minutes to do it.
Okay. I'd like to read a letter that was sent to the city manager as well as Chief Fisher, and it outlines some of our concerns, and it reads as follows. "We are disturbed at the many, at many of the comparison claims and assumptions that have been made in the attached report that we received only yesterday. It is interesting that the report documenting the rationale came to us only one day before the city of Vista scheduled a meeting for final ratification on the decision to revoke the letter of intent. The city of Vista Fire Department has constantly consistently expressed their intent and their anxiety to purchase two more North Star vehicles from us in the near term. Your battalion chief issued a letter of intent we received back in July 16th of this year with the claims emphasizing the need to move the production date forward in reviewing, in reviewing the email correspondence between myself and battalion chief. It is clear to me that, to us, I should say, that we have, that, that we never at any time were led to believe that there was a concern with us as your sole supplier, source supplier until 11th hour decision was made by your committee to go elsewhere. We were not aware of any of your concerns raised in the attachments, and those were part of your agenda, except for the air conditioning feature across the ceiling. In this particular instance, we informed you we would provide this feature for you if you, if you were to include it in your vehicle specification. In fact, given your encouragement and professional trust developed over the years, we committed your ambulance to our production schedule and made accommodations for them. This was specifically at your request as a result of the letter of intent. We believe that many of the claims in the attached document, which was part of your review previously, included quoted prices for use for comparisons are factually inaccurate, misleading, and potentially damaging to Braun Northwest. In fact, this data was not provided by Braun Northwest but was created by the author of the document. Therefore, Braun Northwest requests a delay in the ratification decision to purchase another competitor's vehicles which scheduled for the meeting tonight. We ask that you allow us to address the unfair claims and attempt to resolve your concerns. We believe that specific process used by Vista to get to this decision to select another ambulance is inconsistent with the document policies and goals of Vista's municipal code 3.08.030C. And if I may, I'd like to read it. It said, "We sign, to be able to use this," it says, "a single brand name when significant cost savings have been demonstrated, standardization of supplies, materials, or equipment is permitted, and the specifications warranted." Uh, let's see. "We feel that we have been excluded by the selection committee and maintain that this is an unfair business practice. We recommend that the decision that is scheduled today to ratify the purchase of the two ambulances be postponed. We encourage the city of Vista to conduct an unbiased investigation into the vehicle comparison claims offered to justify this decision for be verified. We would, Braun Northwest would support a decision by the city of Vista to bid this purchase against a specification that allows all interested vendors equal opportunity to compete and thereby provide the city of Vista the best overall solution based on your criteria. Braun Northwest is only asking to be treated fairly. We desire to compete by bidding to support your emergency vehicle needs with the same openness and using the same criteria or set of requirements you would expect from any supplier. We have had many years of history with the city of Vista and would like to maintain and improve our relationship with the city of Vista and on the merits of your products, customer commitment, and, I mean, on our products, customer commitments and service. We thank you for the consideration on this, sir."
Thank you. Have there any questions or...
Well, at this time, you can have a seat.
Why don't you just have a seat? Okay.
And Chief Fisher, would you now please provide a report to council?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Gary Fisher, fire chief for the city of Vista, and I have with me Battalion Chief Jeff Hahn with the Fire Department as well. I think what we have here is a case of sour grapes and huge miscommunication and lack of communication between the sales rep and the factory. In fact, Dick Reynolds has been involved with this process early on, and it's known since September that we were probably going to go with another ambulance manufacturer. And if you'd like, we could give you more detail on the process. Chief Hahn actually was the person that was putting all that together and could give you some insights as to how that process flowed and, and where Dick Reynolds was involved with that.
I don't think we need to get into any of, any of that, except that I think that, Chief, that the council would like to hear the criteria and the differences between the two companies is what they would need to make the decision.
Okay. In the back of your packet, there is a summary between the two ambulances, between the two finally, finalist ambulances. And what we did was, we took the specifications right off of the Braun website of how they construct their apparatus, and we compared that to the construction process or the construction of other specifications of other manufacturers. And then we also actually did a drive of these, of these units. We visited other units and looked at other units in the field. And without me going on and on, I think what I'll do is turn this over to Jeff and explain the specification process and how we, how we arrived at this.
Good evening. We put together a committee, we put together a committee of the users of the ambulances, and I charged them with, to take a look at, since we had to buy two, to take a look at the whole concept of, you know, how are the ones that we have working out, look at what's available on the marketplace, what's going to be the best fit, and what's going to be the most value and what'll be reliable. We went out and, with that charge, they went out and looked at everything that was on the market. We went to a trade show. We visited the units around the North County, the other agencies, asked them, interviewed them, how are those working out for you? We looked at specifications. Mr. Reynolds was actually a big help, came to one of our meetings. He talked. We've got specifications and drawings from him, and certainly Braun that we have was one of the final running manufacturers in that deliberation process. In the end, they went a different direction with another product, and I think in the report clearly demonstrated on the points that they have here that it's a superior product and has things that Braun at this time was unable to offer. This is going to result in having a better fit for our organization and provide better customer service for our patients that we transported the ambulances.
Okay, does the council have any questions? Mr. Gronky?
Just really quickly, this is not to be taken lightly, the purchase of an ambulance. In fact, we're purchasing two of them. What's the cost of, per unit?
Almost 300 and... Hang on just a second. It's...
$151,919.
Yeah, 303 total.
So when you go out, as you said, you had a committee put together and went out and looked at different, different vendors, different types of vehicles, and made sure that this is just the one you wanted, then?
Yes, that's correct. And we've been at this almost 12 months.
Okay.
Looking at this, and they all feel fairly passionate about the subject. It was a voluntary committee, and they did a very good job of looking at all this stuff.
And typically, you don't replace seats, what, every four years, five years or so?
Um, yes, six, six years on this style.
Now, the speaker talked about this equal opportunity, you know, that the criteria wasn't the same. Did you feel, you said September, he knew the criteria?
In, you know, in working with the committee, I mean, his, his vehicle was one that we were, the committee was interested in and that we looked at, and certainly was very helpful in providing documents and associated things. And we had, we had gone towards, you know, setting up a purchase with him. What would it look like? How much would it cost? How much would it cost? Would we be able to explore piggyback bidding, all those options in our examinations? And then by September, the committee was, you know, sort of sorting out which direction they were going to go, and I-- and they were starting to go in other directions. So at that point, we're saying, okay, well, let's hold up here and see what they decide.
But you have similar conversations with other vendors, too?
That's correct.
Okay. So you didn't lead him on to think that he was the only one that potentially could be the person that provides this vehicle?
Well, we were-- he was certainly in the end running.
I'd like to clarify for council that this was not a bid process. We were piggybacking on another bid, another city's bid process, trying to expedite the process and speed things up.
Just like we do any other bids?
Like we do many bids, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lopez?
The bottom line, are you getting a better deal by going and better product?
We believe so.
Both?
Yes, we believe so.
And you said that back in September, the gentleman knew that it wasn't a set deal at that point, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Back then?
That's correct.
Why is he saying here today, 11th hour here today, that he's--
A couple of things have occurred. One is, in order to get the ambulance in a timely fashion, we had to put a marker into his production schedule. And so we did that as a contingency to see if we were going to go that direction. You know, we didn't want to get into the production schedule so far down the road we wouldn't get an ambulance for another year. So we did that.
Where's the other company from?
The other company is represented out of Orange County, an emergency vehicle group up in Anaheim.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Ritter.
So is that a normal process to put a marker in there? Is that-- did that give them the thought that they were going to absolutely have that? Or, I mean, is that a normal thing that people do, is put a marker into, just in case?
Um, it was represented to me that-- well, actually, in the preliminary talks that we had, and it came up that it was going to be almost a year to produce this ambulance, that's-- I backed away and said, "Well, you know, we need to explore other options, and there's no point in going any further talking anymore." And then he came back to me with, "Well, if we put a marker in, we can bump you up into the schedule and get something happening quickly," so.
Okay. But he knew that wasn't like the final decision because you put a marker in there?
Correct. Yeah, we knew that the committee had not made a final decision on what we were going to do.
And he knew there was a committee that was looking at it?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, he'd met with us.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Mr. Gronky.
I was just going to go ahead and make the motion. I'm comfortable with the answers I heard tonight, so.
No other questions from the city council? We haven't made one yet.
I'll go with a motion for approval of the purchasing of these ambulances.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. If there are no further questions, please cast your votes. Okay, and that passes unanimously, so that the recommendation made by staff was approved. The next item to be polled was number C-21, is a traffic signal priority list. The reason I polled this is the two traffic signals that we have that are next to be built, one at Boebier and Goodwin, and the next one is at Taylor and East Vista Way. I just-- we've built so many traffic signals that it's almost hard and difficult to travel across this town with any assurance that we're going to make it across town. I-- if we do approve this, how soon would these two be built?
These will be-- excuse me, Mayor. These will be included in the '09-10 CIP, which would commence on July 1st, 2009, and they would probably be under construction probably in mid-2010.
Okay. I know I'm not a traffic engineer, but it just appears to me that the one at Boebier and Goodwin is just going to make a holy mess out of that whole area around Vista School, Vista High School. And I would like to see us kind of hold off on doing any more traffic signal construction for a while. I guess that's a recommendation from me, and I don't know how the rest of the council feels about it. Mrs. Gelder, do you have a question or comment?
I just have a question also to include in that is that if that would be the schedule, is there actual funding for those-- both of those traffic signals, since funding usually is difficult to come by for traffic signals?
Yes, we have money for both of these traffic signals.
There would be funding by that time?
Yes.
Okay. Any-- Mr. Lopez?
You're saying to leave Oak and East, leave those?
Leave those in, the ones that we've got that are under construction now that are under that. But these two new ones, hold off for a while longer before we do that.
I'll go along with you on that. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Gronky?
Yeah, just some clarification. Goodwin Drive-- Goodwin Drive is right next to Vista High School. That's the street that's adjacent to--
Adjacent, uh-huh. It's adjacent to--
Just to the west.
And this is on the calendar because of the number of warrants and accidents at that location?
Right.
Yeah, there's a series of things that we evaluate, not only whether it's ready for a signal and has enough traffic flow, but traffic warrants, the citations that have been there, accident history, a whole series of analysis. We do actually do two. We do one for the signal warrant, and we do one for the signal prioritization. Both have been the same practices we've been using for years here to rate our traffic signals.
I'm just a little concerned that there must be a better way to control that area if you're going to put a traffic signal one-- a half a block away from another traffic signal.
Not even that.
Yeah, well, first of all, it warrants the signal because of the traffic flow in there. And one of the things that we've been doing is, if you recall, we've been continuing through a project that we started several years ago of traffic signal interconnect. These signals will be interconnected along with the signal all the way down to-- North Santa Fe. So they will all work together in a series so that we won't have the same problem that we've had in the past where you have signals operating independently. They will operate together and they're able to sequence all of the movements together so that you're able to move the traffic through those areas. And actually, it should improve the flow of the traffic through those and increase some safety for the people coming out of-- Goodwin, yes.
Okay. Is there a-- Okay, I would make a motion that we put in abeyance these two signals and add a point in time when we can come back and look at them again, and then proceed with those that are under construction now.
How long?
Pardon? Until we determine that there is a greater need.
Mayor, would you like to-- we bring back the CIP program annually to council?
When we bring them back to--
So we can annually review it?
Right.
I think that'd be a better time to review it anyhow, isn't it? Our annual CIP. Okay, until then. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Okay, that takes us to item number C-22. Do you want to hear from the gentleman, or do you want to give a staff report first? Whoever's. Okay, Mr. Rabel, item C-22.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Chuck Rabel, A-21 Crescent. I don't want to belittle Ms. Geldert or waste your time, but I'd certainly like a raise of $12,500. And she's going to get it. Nothing I can do about it. Back to Prop L, wasn't that long ago. So we were told that the Moonlight Stage Project was ready to go at $5 million. It's now $12 million. We were told that the new city hall was going to cost $40 million. Now it's $55 million. It was $55 million less than a year and a half after the election. But let's-- in these troubled times, and the economics are going to be the worst in my lifetime, let's give everybody a raise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you. I have the pleasure of representing the council at the California League of Cities. And in the last year, there's been a number of openings come up that would be, I would think, most attractive for certainly somebody of Mrs. Geldert's caliber. And her expressed loyalty and devotion to this city is just unmatched, I think, in the industry. And the amount of effort and time she puts into making sure we are able to perform with our budget and accomplish difficult tasks. If anything, I think she's enormously underpaid compared to the performance of many other city managers in the region. And I understand Mr. Rabel's point, but to lose-- potentially even lose the talent and capabilities of Mrs. Geldert would be just totally unacceptable, I think, to at least me as a councilperson, and I think it's just invaluable damage to this community. So I fully support this and would move to approve it.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. I'd like to add, too, that, you know--
I have one, too.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Rabel, difficult times. But I'm-- I also go to a lot of the League of Cities, to the state. And one of the things I often hear at the League of Cities is that as soon as you're done with Ms-- with your city manager, Ms. Geldert, we'd love to have you, we'd love to have her. And she's known throughout the whole state of her talent here as a city manager. When she came on board years ago, we had some bit of a problem in our community finances, and she found the problems and got the city on track. Right now, there's many cities who are in trouble financially, but the City of Vista is in pretty good shape due to her ability to understand financing. And at this point, she's also paid less than other city managers in the state. I just would like to see us agree on this tonight because I think she's well worth it, and it's a time right now when we need someone who is sharp with that pencil. And she's out there taking care of you folks also. Thank you.
I second that also.
Okay, thank you. I might mention that this is not really a salary increase in the true sense of the word. She's being given a portion of her retirement-- or the city's retirement program, the payment premium on that, which other employees already have. She's the only employee in the whole city that doesn't receive that.
The employees all paid?
No, I know, the employees--
All employees paid.
Yeah. Okay. That's what I said. And-- but anyhow, the rest is in deferred compensation, so I'm in favor of it as well. So with that, would you please cast your votes? We had a motion. Mr. Campbell made the motion, and Mrs. Ritter seconded it. Okay. And that's adopted unanimously. Next, we go to the discussion items. The first is the selection of mayor pro temp. This is the individual who serves for a year at a time, and it's a one-year term, as I said, and they act in the absence of the mayor. Mrs. Ritter?
I'd like to nominate Bob Campbell, please.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Lopez, did you have a comment? Okay. We have a dual motion, then? Okay. Okay. If we have no further discussion, then please cast your votes. Only if you want to. Okay, that's unanimous. Mr. Campbell will be the new mayor pro temp for the coming year. Next is discussion item D-2, which is the community service fees. These are fees that are from our Parks and Community Services Department that we evaluate on a yearly basis. Mr. Fortmiller?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Bill Fortmiller, Acting Director, Recreation and Community Services. To my right is Bill Crane, our management analyst that will be presenting the report tonight. And also in the audience are division managers Natalie Livingston, Dan Kays, Mary Drybald and Sam Bukema, should any questions arise for them as well.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. The following presentation will provide background information on our proposed community services fees. The annual fee review evaluates revenues and expenditures, compares Vista's fees with neighboring cities' venues and attractions, and strives to recover 60% of the program cost recovery as directed by the city council from the 2002 DMG Maximus study. The annual fee review-- fee increases are proposed in several categories to reflect the cost of the various programs they support and to decrease the impact of the programs on the city's general fund. On this slide are a few examples of some of the proposed fee increases, including increase of $1 in several categories of admissions to the wave water parks, as well as increasing the season pass for four or more persons for $5 to a rate of 65. And then we propose to increase the private party park rental rate by $100 to $1,200 per hour for parties with between 1 and 500 attendees, and also to establish new private park rental hourly rates of $1,500 for parties of 501 to 750 guests and $1,700 for 751 or more guests. The only program increase recommended in the recreation program is to increase the traveling day camps, $21 for residents and $24 for non-residents, to $151 and $180 respectively. And these proposed increases are due to increased travel costs and increased admission costs. Also, effective August 2008, we made online registration available to the public, and our provider is ActiveNet, and there's a fee to sign up for recreation programs online. It's 6.5% of the program cost or a minimum of $2. Regarding our facility rental fees, we have no proposed rent increases for recreation or senior center facilities. However, in the proposed rates are-- rates for the recently completed Rain Tree Park Sports Arena and the soon-to-be completed community room at fire station number five. The Moonlight Facility fees, our proposed rate structure, which is available on page 14, is-- would be based-- is based more on a daily or a half-day use and not on an hourly rate, and this proposed structure will increase the competitiveness and the attractiveness for the rental of the facilities. We are proposing a $1 per ticket increase for most ticket categories to keep pace with the increased production costs and to decrease the cultural arts programs' impact on the general fund. Included within our ticket prices is a $2 facility charge and a $1 software program fee as part of the rate. We propose to increase season tickets at the AVO for the winter season from $60 to $63. That's a $1 per ticket increase. And I should note that if you do buy season tickets, there's an $18 savings over the purchase of single adult tickets. For single tickets, our recommended ticket price range is from $22 to $27. And as you can see there, some of the comparable venues and their rates, such as the San Diego Repertory Theater, $29 to $53, the Welk Resorts Theater, $44 to $63 per ticket, and the Lamb's Player Theater from $20 to $56 per ticket. This slide shows current and proposed season tickets rate for the Moonlight Amphitheater. The proposed increases represents a $1-- again, represents a $1 per show ticket increase. And then, again, with the Moonlight summer season, we're recommending a $1 price increase per ticket. The recommended ticket price range would be from $20 to $40. And then some of the comparable venues-- And then some of the comparable venues are the San Diego Starlight Theater, which charges $18 to $75 per ticket. Mind you, those are last year's rates. They haven't published their current rates. And then the Fullerton Civic Light Opera, which charges $27 to $53 per ticket. On this slide, you see an estimate, our estimates of increased revenue due to these adjustments. However, I should point out that the revenue estimates for both the Moonlight summer and winter season have been revised downward from what's included in your agenda report. This change is based on recent corrections to our current year fiscal revenue estimates. And I also wanted to point out one correction on page 19 of the staff report, which is the rates for the Moonlight Amphitheater. And we propose that the, would like to correct, rather, that the adult lawn seats receive no ticket price increase, that those remain at $24. And with that, this concludes staff report. We are available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. We have one individual that wants to speak. Do you want to hear them first?
Mr. Mayor, Council Chuck Rabel, again, 821 Crescent Drive. Just two things. One is the Wave, my understanding is enterprise fund accounting, and I would suggest that the consideration be given at some point in the future that the Moonlight go on a similar accounting system, in the hopes that in the future, maybe both can be run like a business. Second, we've got several classes and categories of fees, if you will. In the Wave alone, it's, one is how tall are you, or how old are you, what time of day it is. These things have evolved over time, as they have at the Moonlight, and at some point in time, consideration should be given, starting with a clean piece of paper and making rational decisions as to whether or not we should, the fees, the pricing should be structured the way it is, or perhaps there is a better way of doing it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel. Pardon? Please, if you would.
Yes, Mr. Rabel, the reason that there are, that there's the differentiation between the height and the age and the day, time of day, is because that's, follows completely a business model on the private industry. And so we do take those things seriously, and that's where you maximize your profit as well as the utilization of the facility itself. And so those things, those items there and those differentiations become strictly off of the private enterprises and other successful water parks.
Okay. Mr. Gronky?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I'd like to make two recommendations today. We are talking about coming up on lean times, and it's my hope that we don't put an extra burden on those that can't afford it. To me, seniors are on fixed, typically on fixed incomes, and usually can't afford any types of increases. So I would ask the council if they would, when it comes to single purchase tickets, whether it be the Wave, or the AVO, or the Moonlight, that we don't approve the increase in that area. And also, out of respect to our military, our active military, that we don't increase their fees either.
Okay. Is that all? Okay, Mr. Campbell?
Mayor, thank you. Would you like to— Okay. We don't want to forget Mr. Lopez.
He's after you.
Thank you. I think it's becoming a time, and we have to read, as we have, we've analyzed all of fee structures for the various venues that we support. And it seems to me we've always made a good effort to be competitive and provide support for, Mr. Gronky, for those that have difficulty paying. In fact, I think there's a Science for Success program, provides some scholarships and things of that for some of the youth that simply otherwise couldn't participate in activities. So I commend the city for that, and hoping to expand that program in the future with sponsorships. But I do have a concern about, and I've expressed this to Mr. Kays, about the Moonlight Amphitheater. The Moonlight has indeed, over time, not only gone from great to fabulous, it just keeps getting better with every season. And part of that is due to the, obviously, the quality of our staff is excellent, but also the quality of the players and the facility keeps improving. We're in the process now of making a quantum leap in terms of facility. And thanks to the Moonlight Cultural Foundation and their support, we're going to have an incredibly better sound and lighting package and far better physical facilities for our shows to come into. And I know that we'll see the result of that, and everybody will be thrilled. Plus, the shows will be running a bit longer, which will allow more people to attend each of them. But I do think that, I've probably been on this four to five years, and apologies to Mr. Kays, because I know he really wants to make sure everybody can come, but I think we have to get real with what the marketplace is for this type of theater, and increase our rates a little more aggressively than we have in the past in order to make sure we have funds available for the maintenance and support of the facilities and to pay the salaries of the quality people that are involved in these productions. To that end, and I agree with not adjusting the lawn seating rates, but I'd move to increase the other rates by $5 per seat.
Okay. Is that in? Ms. Lopez?
I agree with Mr. Gronky about our military. One of the things with the theater right now, you know, we're going to be putting in a theater that's top-notch, good quality. I can see a small increase there, but I just don't want to see an increase at the Wave because times are difficult right now, and we have young people there going during the summer. I'd like to see those young people still be able to, be able to attend there, and because they come from all over the North County. And if we increase that too much, then they'll be out on those streets, and I'd rather see them out there playing in a nice, safe place than out in the street. So I agree with Mr. Gronky, and then agree with Mr. Campbell on the theater. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion on this? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gronky, I forgot. Okay.
I'd like to follow up what Mr. Campbell brought up because he's talking about the Moonlight having an opportunity for additional venues besides just the summer theater. When we go into those types of negotiations, say we get some other entertainment over there that's outside of our regular summer performances, do we not get a portion of the gate, or how do we negotiate that? It seems like there's got to be some revenue generated from these other additional opportunities that we don't have available to us now.
Mr. Kays can address that.
Yes. If we get into presenting organizations, each group will be negotiated with separately. And typically, what we will try to achieve on most occasions is pay a lump sum for their services, and with the ticket price, be able to pay off the artist, cover all of the rest of our costs, plus then give back into the general fund, you know, a projected profit on those. So we wouldn't negotiate, we would try to stay out of negotiating gate with most organizations. Typically, it's safer for us and less risk to just basically say, the artist costs so much money, that's how much they'll get paid. We'll base our ticket prices on the, that, those expenses, plus the rest of the expenses, our marketing expenses, any materials, any rentals that we have to do to achieve that production, and make sure that our ticket costs cover those costs with a conservative audience. Not saying that we're going to blow out the house and sell it out. We're looking at a very conservative audience attending and still being able to make those dollars, plus a little bit of profit to go into the general fund subsidy.
Okay. Again, one of the reasons I supported Prop L and work for Prop L, in particular with the Moonlight, was that I was convinced that there would be additional opportunities. So as these opportunities come up, and the way you just expressed that, it'd be upfront money, and the money would be a certain percentage, or would each entertainment opportunity have its own negotiation?
Each entertainer comes with a set price. I'll give you one example, a company that is touring a children's production called The Magic Tree House, which is in the books that a lot of kids are reading nowadays. That production cost around $20,000 to bring that show. On top of that is their housing. We would have to house them in local hotels. Their transportation, we would do a buyout so that we're not having to schedule airfare for all of their folks that come, that they would do their own airfare. We would give them, we would come to an agreed amount. If it's beyond that amount, then the rest is on them. But that, that's it. That's all we owe them. And then the rest of it, we would, again, whatever other expenses, we make sure we have in our budget, and that we charge a ticket price that when you have at least a conservative house, that you're going to make all that back. And then if you have a very successful show, which I think that one would be one of them, you would be able to then make a profit on that that would then go against the general fund subsidy.
So all costs are paid upfront, so the profitability of each performance depends on the number of people in the crowd?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's with any arts organization.
Okay. And that's a typical negotiation?
That is a typical negotiation.
Okay. Okay. I support what Mr. Campbell said about the fact that we have a very nice venue here. I don't support the fact that we need to be additionally aggressive, particularly at this time. I mean, as when, when the economy gets better, then, yeah, I think we can need to go out, but I would hold back on that right now. And it seems like we're going to have more enough opportunities to gain additional entertainment opportunities at the Moonlight. I mean, that's what it's all about. We're enclosing that structure so that we can go well beyond our summer themes.
Okay. Mr. Campbell?
Well, I think Mr. Gronky makes a great point. However, I see the two enterprises being quite different. One is one that we're out marketing theatrical productions that we actually control and manage and have a history of success with. The other is more of entrepreneurial opportunity for additional revenues, and I think you're absolutely spot on to do that. But if you look at the chart that was provided to us by Mr. Kays and put in the presentation here, we're arguably up to 50 percent under market rates on ticket prices. And then the subchart that he provided to us in the handout actually shows that we're charging now, in some cases, less than we were charging in 2004. And I think that's not going to help us keep the quality of the programs and the level of staffing we need to continue to excel in this area. And by excelling, you draw people, and by doing that, we make the thing work. That is my only reason for proposing that.
Okay. Do we have a, oh, Mr. Kays?
Just one. The reason that there are some prices lower than 2004 is because we went to three shows last year.
Okay. We have a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion, but I would again like to make those two alterations, one for the seniors and one for the military.
Okay. Is there a second to Mr. Gronky's motion?
Question, please, sir. Does that include a ticket increase for reserve seating?
Is this the single-ticket item for the seniors, for all the venues, and for the military?
But otherwise, you accept the reserve, the increase in reserve ticket pricing?
All the increases except for those two areas.
I'd second that.
So that would be the recommended ticket price, not the one that Mr. Campbell suggested?
No, not the one Mr. Campbell suggested, the one suggested by staff, excluding those two areas.
Okay. So, Mr. Campbell, do you still second that motion?
Well, certainly, I don't mind seconding that motion for discussion purposes, but I don't think that we can continue to support cultural arts to the level that we have unless we actually realistically look at what we're recovering in terms of revenues.
Do you have a substitute motion?
My substitute, I would support Mr. Gronky's two positions on military and, what was the second one, Mr. Gronky?
Seniors.
And seniors, but still, on reserve seating at the Moonlight, go up $5 a ticket.
And a clarification, point of clarification is that his motion is for the reduction, for no increase in those two items, for seniors and military, for the Wave Water Park.
Wave Water Park.
And the Moonlight.
Well, they don't, there's, there's no, that's not a category like that for the Moonlight. Have questions?
Okay. Is there a motion to Mr. Campbell's, I mean, a second to Mr. Campbell's motion? A substitute motion?
Right here.
Second. No, no, substitute motion.
Second.
Okay.
Question.
Mrs. Ritter?
Okay. So are you talking just on, you're not talking on the season, you're talking on reserve tickets? You're talking on the season? What, exactly which thing you're going up on?
Well, it would, Mrs. Ritter, it would translate into $5 a seat, whether it's single or a season, because the season tickets are already something like $18, less costly than individuals. So am I correct, Mr. Kays? The season tickets are already—
Season tickets are 25 percent discounted. If you bought all single sales and you bought a season ticket and compared those, you'd be saving about 25 percent.
Yeah, which I think is what a lot of people look for, is to have that value. But I don't see any problem in per show increasing it $5 a seat. So for a season ticket, we'd go up $15, and a single ticket, a single show, we'd go up $5.
Keeping, keeping the ratio of season ticket to single ticket.
Any other comments? Ms. Lopez, did you have a—
No. I made the second.
Okay. We will go down to substitute motion first. Does anyone understand the substitute motion?
Okay. One time.
Okay. Mr. Campbell, would you?
Oops. I voted for him.
It's all right. We can redo that. That we would not increase, we would incorporate Mr. Gronky's concerns as it relates to the Wave Water Park, that we would not increase lawn seating, as this is an area where more people can attend that otherwise could not afford to attend. But we know there's demand for, for the fixed seating, fixed seating, and that we raise individual seats, $5 each for the, both the season and the, so it'd be $15 on the season for three shows, and $5 for the individual shows.
Second.
$5 per ticket.
Per ticket.
Per individual show.
Correct.
Very good. Please cast your votes. Okay, that passes with Mr. Gronky voting down. Okay. The next item on the agenda is D3, which is the review of Sandag's 2008 Midyear Crime in the Region Report, by Mr. Kurt Smith from Sandag, who will be here to give a presentation to us.
That is correct. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Patrick Johnson. I'm the Assistant City Manager, and with me is Wendy Romanoli, who will make an introduction.
Mr. recently received a copy of Sandag's 2008 Midyear Crime in the Region Report, which assembles and distributes many interesting facts about crime rates and trends in San Diego County, but it also lends itself to some questions about how that data is tracked and put together by the Sheriff's Department. So Captain Curran is here with some of his staff members to give a presentation on how those numbers are put together, and at the end, he'll answer any questions that you
Good evening, Mayor and distinguished council. I'm Captain Curran. I'm the captain of the Vista Sheriff's Station. Tonight, I'd like to introduce the Sheriff's Crime Analysis Division's Manager, Kurt Smith, along with Crime Analyst Darcy Brown. And what they're here tonight to explain is Sandag's 2008 Midyear Crime Report stats. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Smith, and I'll be available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I think I associated with you with another organization. I apologize.
Pardon me? Yeah, you associated me with Sandag at the beginning. I am, in fact, a sheriff's employee as the manager of Crime Analysis. No offense taken. Thank you, Captain Curran. It's my pleasure to be here tonight, Honorable Mayor, council members, City Manager Geldert, to discuss, again, as was already indicated, the 2008 midyear crime numbers as were released in the recent Sandag report the end of October. In discussing those numbers, obviously, they are what they are. They're in the report. What I'd like to do is convey some related information. What those public numbers are, how our business process at the Sheriff's Department turns what you see as calls for service, for patrol service and investigations here in the City of Vista, into those public numbers through their entry into Argus and through the business rules, both that we comply with through the Sheriff's Department into Argus, and as well the guidelines that the FBI's index or uniform crime reporting requires us to comply with. And do I have a button? Or do I say next? Oh, there it is. I think I can figure this out. So, jumping right in, the Sandag report are what most people see as the public crime numbers. Those reports come out, each of the communities, as you know— Those reports come out, each of the communities, as you know, and seeing those reports from Sandag generally are lined up. Vista is one of those communities that happens to be in the list included with those that either contract with or are provided law enforcement services by the Sheriff's Department. The way, obviously, that report is formatted plays on the human nature of making comparisons, year-to-year comparisons, community-by-community comparisons. In order to do that in an informed way and understanding what those numbers mean, regardless of the timeframes and the communities you're comparing, really requires understanding what public crime numbers are. And in essence, I'll start by summarizing, public crime numbers are, to us, the public face of the service that we provide, both in the Sheriff's Department and with our law enforcement partners and criminal justice partners across the region. They aren't the numbers that we make the day-to-day operational decisions from. In general, they're indicators, but they are, again, not what we see on a day-to-day basis, call-by-call, report-by-report basis. The public numbers, as they're reported here in our region and across the country, are guided fundamentally by the guidelines of the FBI's Uniform Crime Reports Index Crimes. You hear these commonly referred to as Part One crimes. There are several different parts. Part Ones being those most serious violent and property offenses, the violent crimes being homicide, rape, robbery, and aggravated assault, not all assaults, but the, those that are aggravated, as well as the property crimes of burglary, including residential and commercial burglaries, all thefts, and then specifically motor vehicle theft. It's the count that counts, though. What we see on a call-by-call, report-by-report basis is not exactly aligned with what the FBI requires in how those particular kinds of crimes are counted. Oftentimes, we take reports in the field where multiple crimes are charged. Oftentimes, folks who are prosecuted by the DA's office are held accountable to a number of different crimes. For the public crimes, the highest charge on the report that's filed is what counts, not on what is finally charged or how that case is, is handled through the DA's under review. So, it's the count that counts. The highest count controls the charge. On several different types of crimes, notably those that are the violent crimes, the number of victims are counted. What we would see as a, possibly a single crime report with multiple victims listed, when that single report that's dealt with as one consolidated investigation turns into those public numbers that we're talking about, oftentimes, there are more than one victim, and it's the multiple victims that count. I think a common example across the country would be fight calls. Deputies respond to a call, multiple people have been in a fight, they conduct the investigation after getting safety at the scene, doing all the things that they normally do. That single report that's documented that incident, listed the different victims, the different suspects, is forwarded for investigation. What Captain Curran's folks see at Vista Station would be an investigation with multiple victims. When that report is entered into ARGIS and each victim is listed, then, on the monthly basis, it gets recapped and reported to the DOJ. Each one of those victims in the report is then counted, not the report for that single incident, but the number of victims are actually summed up and reported. So, you can see how little by little and over time, the differences between what we see as individual calls, individual investigations that deal with multiple, multiple people, oftentimes, particularly for violent crimes, turn into multiple numbers where we see and make operational and investigative decisions off of a slightly different view. The property crime counts vary by circumstance. I think that's the area where the highest charge has the most control over it, particularly with auto theft. We had initially, or originally planned on this being a workshop discussion, and I was prepared to go through with several different examples. Let me summarize that, again, the highest control on the property crime charge oftentimes causes what the public numbers to come out under the UCR guidelines to look different from what we deal with on a day-by-day operational decision-making process from the stats, from those things that you see as calls for service, we see as investigations, and then what then get recapped and come out through Sandag as our public numbers. And finally, the win factor is there. We rely on ARGIS, as the other agencies across the region do, to provide the monthly recap that we submit to the Department of Justice. We refer to it as a return A report. Those are our DOJ public numbers. They go in every month. Once they're in, they're essentially etched in stone. Those are not generated by when the crimes occurred. They're counted by when those crime incidents were entered into ARGIS. It's the entry date that yields the public numbers into the record system, not what we see on a day-to-day basis with the crimes as they're reported or the investigations as they're completed and forwarded to the DA. So, again, these are all reasons why, while we're aware of and we look and we steer generally by the public numbers, we make operational decisions off of those things that we know to be occurring in real time. We have a business process that hasn't necessarily helped all that inside the Sheriff's Department, but that process is improving. About a year ago, year and a half ago, the Sheriff's Department rolled out a new records management system, started deploying it station by station across the department. That deployment is now done. We refer to it as Net RMS. It's our web-based records management system. And I'll expand on that a little bit more in a minute, but it is our first step toward not just improving our ability to consolidate the way we manage information around the law enforcement services we provide, but also across the board to improve our business process. So, what does that business process look like? I don't know if there's still any high school students left in the room. I was going to encourage you, continue studying math. It never goes away. I know everybody says you'll never use it again. You do, right, Darcy? Every day? Our business process isn't just a pile of numbers. It's, it's ongoing, and what you see in front of you as a, as a graph in dark blue shows those public numbers. Your Vista mid-year crime numbers were higher than they were for the mid-year of 2007, right? The Sandag report, by its structure, compels you to compare this year mid-year to last year mid-year. It doesn't take an analyst at a glance to see that that's not a surprise and it wasn't a surprise to us. What you saw across 2007 in the dark blue line compared to the light blue line were, again, our public numbers versus those that we can now look back and say, based on when the crimes were reported, what crime actually occurred during any of those reportable months. The dark blue line represents what we sent forward to the DOJ. The light blue line represents now, with a clear picture of looking back, what actually occurred on a month-by-month basis. So, what happened in April of this year? What happened in April of this year was the first big step of our records unit, making that transition to entering data into ARGIS from our new Net RMS record system. They had accumulated a bit of a lag as they made a transition, as any business unit does when you make a, an IT transition. That lag was made up for by an investment in overtime. So, what you see on that chart as a peak comes out to the public as higher crime during that month or those two-month periods. What we know that is to be our fingers on keyboards in our records unit, making that transition from what the deputies are now using in the field as an electronic reporting system instead of a paper-based reporting system, and making that connection between a new IT environment into the existing ARGIS environment on the, the business rules. So, what looks like to the public as an increase in crime and what comes out summed up in a mid-year crime review as an increase in crime, again, you can look at the light blue number and see it's a lot flatter, it's a lot more of a month-to-month consistency that you would expect. But again, our business process contributes to how the, the public numbers come into place. City of Vista, specifically for that same time period, much smaller numbers compared to the entire sheriff's wide jurisdiction. Anytime you go to smaller numbers, you generally statistically, you get a little more variation. Maybe I should have the workshop with the, with the high school students for extra credit later. We can talk about that more too, though. But what you see is a lot more difference on a month-to-month basis, but generally, generally, if you held those at arm's length, you'd see that the city of Vista process with smaller numbers compares to or is generally similar in form to the department-wide. Obviously, then dragging these out over the course of a whole year, anytime we have those variations on a month-to-month basis, a full-year view tends to soften that impact. Six-month view compared to six months from the previous year, compared to six months of a base year from five years before, percent by percent is probably about the roughest way to make this comparison, and it certainly didn't look good at the mid-year for this So, what are we doing? What we're doing about that, specifically in the Crime Analysis Unit, is keeping Captain Curran, his staff, the commanders, assistant sheriff, undersheriff, the folks who are responsible for the law enforcement services that we provide, informed within each month what's happening. We know now what's happening, and Darcy, to her credit, provides a lot of support and assistance, and that's her primary job, is connecting this data to the decisions that are made by the command staff at Vista, her counterparts at other patrol stations. We're relying on Net RMS, the capabilities of having a new IT system to improve not just the availability of that data, so it's not a paper process anymore, but the accuracy and completeness of that reporting. As I mentioned earlier, the FBI index crimes have a whole set of business rules. What counts? What kind of crimes count? How are those crimes counted? And when are they counted? All play into what the public numbers end up being. Net RMS is giving us the accuracy, the timeliness, and frankly, an improved process of reporting because the deputies have more valid choices, more specific ways of recording those factors around crimes that result in them making public numbers out the, into the process. The data entry is changing from clerks to computers. We're making that transition as we move forward. We're in final testing with an expectation, the middle of next spring, to make a, a final transition away from doing manual data entry or re-entering factors of the things that have been reported and recorded at our stations to make that connection go straight to ARGIS from our Net RMS system. This causes, while it's a tremendous improvement during this time, a ripple effect. What we saw is a little bit of a wave last April. We're likely to see another little bit of a wave as we press what used to take a month and a half, two or three months to get done with people alone. We're going to see a compression and an increase from that movement from not just electronic reporting in the field to a manual data entry, but electronic reporting in the field to an approval process that then goes straight into ARGIS. When that connection occurs, we're going to see a bit of a compression. How are we dealing with that? Crime Analysis Unit works closely with records and with the Net RMS team to identify by priority while we're still doing manual data entry, those reports and those reported crime incidents that are likely to result in a public number, so that we can soften the effect of that. We now know what that wave looks like in April. It's the month I came to the Sheriff's Department and the month before Captain Curran came to Vista. He and I both know intimately what it is to look at that change in the data entry process and say, we don't want that to happen again, because we don't want to be explaining numbers that are really a reflection of our changing business process rather than crime itself. And finally, out of the Net RMS data, we're leveraging it to focus on the operational crime data. The goal ultimately is to close the gap that has always existed between the public crime numbers, what's reported publicly at the end of this entire business process, ours, ARGIS's, and the FBI rules, and the actual crime that we deal with. Those things that we know on a day-by-day basis, incident by incident oftentimes, that guide the priority setting and that cause us to know and clearly see where we're likely to be headed in the future and then make proactive decisions on resource deployment and priority setting for investigations. Connecting data decisions with analysis, then, as a final note before you may have any questions, doesn't, internally to the Sheriff's Department, doesn't look like the Sandag report. Our operational crime information that we're able to deliver now out of the Net RMS system just within the last two months is proof of the viability and the importance of making this transition. Though it's a little painful, though it causes us to have to manage some of our business process, what we're able to turn around from the Crime Analysis Unit now to Captain Curran and all of his counterparts and identify not just a clear picture of what happened month by month, but also to say, what are the trends and where are we going? We're not bound now by our own business process or the counts and the guidelines from a distance that the FBI has always provided. The example that I give you is our, our Net RMS early warning system. It's a news report where the focus now is on analytical context rather than simply trying to make numbers match. We look at crime categories, we look at, and we have these now by the end of the first business day of the month, how the previous month looked, and we know the trends for the year, whether we're increasing, decreasing, how last month was compared to previous months, and we've refined this so that we also have a mid-month report looking forward. So, to us, numbers aren't just numbers. They're things that we use to set a tone, to set priorities, and to make efficient and effective use of the limited resources that we have in a forward-looking way now and in a way that we haven't been able to in the past. And with that, if you have any questions, I would be honored to answer them.
Mr. Campbell?
Before I go to the button? Mr. Smith, thank you. It really is, feels much better to see that we're getting more on top of this and more on time in reporting, but I was just thinking while you were speaking that it's a bit like a pot of stew. There's a whole bunch of stuff in that stew, and it can change over time depending on who makes it. And I, and I think we're probably curious as to who, what, when, why, where, from a GIS standpoint, where is it? Are these old people, young people? Are these repeat offenders? Are they probationees? Are they, what kind of, what's the makeup? How many of these fight incidents are involving gang members? That type of thing. These are some of the sort of the trends, I think, that internally we'd like to feel we understood better, and we know that you are on top of it, you know what these are all about, but I don't feel that I am.
Okay.
We'd like to know more about that. And this is not, obviously, a workshop, so we can't really get into that depth of it, but do you have that analysis? Do you know?
We have that information. We, we look at it from a variety of different angles, and certainly, as we stand here now, December already, that's the kind of information we can, we can bring back and, and put it, maybe the, the year-end report early in the new year, well before Sandag provides a yearly recap. We can bring those numbers from our station forward and provide them in the full context that, that we see them in and we make decisions with, so you can have a more clear picture than you would otherwise get from a, a regionalized report.
Sure. We're fortunate to have very strong staff liaison with you that understands these things and stays on top of it. And Mr. Lopez works with the Crime and Substance Abuse Commission. I, I represent four cities for Sandag on public safety, and we're constantly looking at these numbers. But I think today, considering what may be the economic trends which may cause more people to have to resort to finding resources that really weren't theirs, but they find them anyway, we'd like to see us keep track of trends of, of that sort of thing and know that you're on top of being able to prevent as much as possible and, and deal with them as they come along. So...
We certainly have the information, and I would like the opportunity to bring that forward to you when the, when the opportunity presents itself.
Sure. I know it's important that staff distill this thing, and we're just looking at a bunch of data, it's not going to be able to put it to much work, but we'd like that. Would you share with the, our audience, please, that there is a website that they can go on to and check out what's going or has gone on in their neighborhood? This is a resource that's been available for some time, but really unknown to most people, that's available through Sandag and ARGIS.
Yeah, it's actually the, and it's GIS-based, it's mapping-based. The easiest way to get there is probably through the ARGIS website, but you can get to it through the Sheriff's Department website, Crime Analysis page as well. It's, if you go to www.Argis, A-R-J-I-S dot org, and select on Crime Maps, you'll see a picture that looks like a little map. It's tan and blue. I picked those colors years ago. I still like them. The Crime Maps interactive mapping page... The Crime Maps interactive mapping page allows you to go in and look at maps and create maps based on the kinds of crimes that you're interested in, in the areas that you're interested in, for all the Sheriff's area and all the other ARGIS participating agencies. It's a great tool. It puts not just that kind of crime and the basic stats, numbers that councilman is referred to, but where they're occurring and a quick summary of the times of day, days of weeks, and the other things that, that well-informed people use to, to make themselves resistant to crime, good crime prevention.
Yeah, thank you. Because I think the people may be aware that something might be going on in the area but don't really know, but this is a way they can confirm whether it seems to be a trend or an issue that should be addressed, which I think being prepared and aware can make them more helpful to us in watching out for issues.
Absolutely. Our premise behind all this is that well-informed people make better decisions, and that's true at every level.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Gronky?
Actually, I have a question of Captain Curran, if you could come up. Thank you, sir.
Sir?
First of all, I want to thank, thanks for the report tonight. It makes me feel more comfortable that our numbers aren't escalating as quickly as, as what was first brought out by the FBI Crime Index, but we have the truer numbers now. But I noticed on that last present, that last plate, that non-residential robbery seemed to spike just recently. Could you define a non-residential robbery? What does that imply?
I, you're probably looking at non-residential burglary?
Yes, exactly.
Commercial, business.
Okay, okay. So, so are you working then with our businesses in town to approach that problem, to try to make them aware of that problem?
Yes, we are. Yeah, matter of fact, I could give you a great example. We had a recent series of slide-down doors of businesses in the business park were being hit, and we worked with them and the partnering cities, Escondido and San Marcos, and we were able to identify a vehicle. Our detectives put the information out along with Darcy Brown, your crime analyst for Vista, and we were able to put that information out, patrol, a very observant patrol person, stopped that vehicle, and I believe they were able to solve about six of those commercial burglaries.
Attributed back to one person?
Correct.
One individual. Okay, thank you.
And that's exactly how it worked. It's getting the information out to our partners, not just here, but also to Escondido, San Marcos, Encinitas.
Exactly. Because they commit crimes all over the county probably, or at least in North County.
They, they don't follow the boundaries, so, correct.
Well, thank you for all, everything you do for our city, I really appreciate it.
Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Captain. Maybe this would be a good thing to bring to the two, two different organizations, the two commissions, the Latino one and also the substance abuse. If possible, we can, they can go over this and get a better understanding.
I think that'd be great to bring to those committees as well.
That's it.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Okay, that concludes our discussion items. We have a request for a very, very brief recess. So, five minutes? Okay. A piece of cake. A piece of cake. Is the mic on?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I think we're ready to start again. In just about one minute.
Go with him, where to go.
Okay, as soon as Mr. Campbell comes back, we'll get started. Uh-oh, this is, you want to change that, or should I just? I wonder where, did he go to restroom or? Okay, we're back in session now. The next item is the public hearing number one. This is an appeal of Planning Case 8203 Recreational Vehicle and Boat Storage Yard, Liberty Family Partnership. Ari DeYoung, applicant, continued from November 18th, 2008. And the staff person that will be giving this is Mr. John Conley, our Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mayor. The project before you this evening is a request for a special use permit inclusive of a site development plan on an 8.7 acre site. The use is proposed as recreational vehicle storage would include a caretaker's residence, an office building, and a maintenance garage and one structure on the site, two covered vehicle wash areas, a propane tank for filling the recreational vehicles, wastewater disposal area, and perimeter screen, screen wall and landscaping. The project was considered by the Planning Commission on November 4th of this year. They voted to deny the application with a vote of three to two, and it was subsequently appealed by the applicant on November 5th, which is why it's before you this evening. The project site, as I stated, is about 8.7 acres located at the northeast corner of Sycamore and South Melrose Drive. Surrounding uses include single-family residential to the north, the Vista Irrigation District to the east, industrial uses to the southeast and south, and commercial development as well as an undeveloped site that's been approved for commercial uses to the west. The zoning on the property is C2, which is a medium commercial designation. It's within specific plan number 24, as well as the properties to the north and west. The property to the west is zoned C1. The properties to the north are zoned multi-residential. To the east is M1, which is a manufacturing zone for industrial use, and to the south is a Vista Business Park specific plan, and that's designated for research light industrial. The site development plan is shown on the overhead proposes to develop the property primarily as a parking area for the storage of recreational vehicles and trailers. Access will be provided at Hot Springs Way via the existing signalized intersection at that location, where there's a turnaround and a gated entry for the entry into the site. Directly past the entrance in the eastern portion of the site would be the office building and the residence for the caretaker, as well as some parking spaces for customers. And in that general area would also be the vehicle wash area, as well as the propane tank, fueling, and the vehicle dump station. The remainder of the property, shown in white on the overhead, would be a gravel-surfaced area that would be used for recreational vehicle storage. The shaded areas are emergency access roads that would serve the property and the storage areas for the movement of the vehicles into and out of the site and for emergency vehicles. The property would be graded in pad configuration with three major pads descending from the eastern side down to the western side along Melrose Drive. You can see the pad elevation separations in the, in the thirds of the pad on the, on the overhead, as well as some grading that would occur along Melrose Drive. All of those sloped areas, manufactured slopes, would be landscaped, and a perimeter wall would be constructed around the site, along the Melrose and Sycamore frontages and along the residential boundary behind. The screen wall would consist of a six-foot-high masonry wall with a 42-inch trellis at the top to accommodate landscaping vines. The operational characteristics of the business are proposed to include a valet service wherein the customers would come and drop off their motorhomes at the, at the office, and staff of the facility would move the vehicles into the site and park them, and the customer's car would be able to be kept on the site as well during that time if they were to drop off their vehicle. The intent is to provide a service where people could come in, pick up their motorhome or their trailer, leave the site without having to drive in and load it and park it and create issues with movement around the property. All of the internal parking and storage would be done by the staff of the facility, and they would use a forklift which would be stored on-site to haul and stage trailers or other vehicles that weren't drivable. The project proposes approximately 170 spaces, which are measured 13 feet wide by 100 feet deep, but more than one RV could obviously fit in that space, and the estimated parking capacity for the project is about 300 to 400 recreational vehicles or trailers. The landscape plan shows extensive landscaping along the street frontages on South Melrose and Sycamore Avenue, as well as extensive landscaping around the entrance. The intention of staff in the landscape plan was to provide the maximum amount of landscaping from public viewpoints on the property in order to screen the use to the extent that we could, as well as to bring a grading plan that would provide some slopes and drop, that drop into the site or that stick up from the street so that landscaping could screen views to the extent that we could accommodate. There's also landscaping along the residential boundary in the north and the eastern part of the property as well, and some landscaping around the caretaker's residence in the eastern portion of the site, as shown in the diagram. Building elevations for the caretaker's facility would be a Mediterranean design similar to the residential uses north of the property, tile roof, stucco facade. The office space would be on the lower floor, as well as a garage for the parking of the caretaker's vehicles, and a maintenance and storage garage for the parking of the forklift that would be used to stage on the site. And the second floor would be dedicated to the caretaker's residence with a balcony that would be able to be used for the caretaker to overlook the facility. Some visual elevations were prepared for the property. This shows the view looking westerly from Sycamore Avenue just to the east of Hot Springs Way. You can see in the upper slide the existing fencing and the access point into the site, and in the lower slide, this is a developed condition after approximately five years of landscape growth. These are a little bit difficult to see, and I can note for the audience that some blowups of these slides are provided along the wall on the right-hand side of the, of the facility this evening. A similar diagram, this is looking northeast at the site from the intersection of Sycamore and Melrose. You can note the, the existing fencing in the upper diagram, and in the lower photo, the landscaping that would be constructed along that frontage, as well as the slopes that would sit up above the street. There's no signage proposed at this location, that's just a landscaped frontage. Just a brief review of the development standards. The applicant has met the majority of development standards. The setbacks are 10-foot landscape setback and a 30-foot building setback from the street frontages, both of which will be met through either conditions or as shown on the site plan. The building heights limited to 35 feet or two stories, which is met by the proposed facility. The parking requires, by the code, one space per 5,000 square feet, which equates to 78 spaces. Only six paved spaces are provided, but based on the use and the design of the site, staff assumes that the 72 additional parking spaces would be accommodated within the storage areas, and considering the valet use that's proposed, that can easily be accommodated. Landscaping is, requires 15% of the site, and 19% is provided. There's a screening requirement of a six-foot wall, which is accommodated by the application with a six-foot masonry wall around the perimeter, plus a 42-inch trellis feature, which with landscaping would increase the height of the wall to approximately nine feet. Access would be via internal 24-foot-wide drive aisles that would be paved, as I mentioned, for emergency access, and there would be an emergency access gate on the South Melrose side of the project, which would be used only in the event of emergencies. side of the project, which would be used only in the event of emergencies. Several issues of concern have been expressed throughout the process, primarily being the compatibility with the surrounding properties, the residential properties to the north. Staff tried to accommodate that to the extent that we can with screen wall and landscaping to block the views or screen the views from those yard areas or at-grade from the street areas. There was some concerns expressed about the occupancy of recreational vehicles while being stored on the site, and the uses that could occur as a result of people living in or staying in those units temporarily. The conditions of approval imposed on the project prohibit any temporary or permanent residence, and the proposed operational characteristics of providing a valet service would eliminate that possibility. Screening was a huge issue addressed by numerous people in the community. We've attempted to address that through the grading design, as well as a six-foot-high wall with the trellis, as we've discussed, and the fact that this location is a gateway to the city from the south, which also has been addressed through the extensive landscaping setbacks along the street frontages in an attempt to screen the use. The site development plan, as conditioned, conforms to development standards in our code, and with the exception of paved visitor parking, which can be accommodated on the site within the storage areas, staff recommends approval of the use, and the findings of approval for the special use permit are included in the staff report for your consideration. And that completes my staff report. Thank you.
Okay. Does the...before we hear from the audience, does the council have any questions of Mr. Conley? Okay, this is a public hearing. It's open. The general procedure is, is that we first hear from the proponent of the project, and he's given enough time to present his case, and then following the proponent's presentation, then we'll hear from everyone else that submitted a speaker slip, and you're given three minutes apiece to provide information concerning your either recommendation for or recommendation against. So, we'll begin. I believe, Mr. Giddings, you're up first.
Mayor, council members, staff, good evening. My name is Rick Giddings, eight oh seven East Mission Road, San Marcos, California. I am here this evening representing Mr. Ari DeYoung, a thirty-year property owner in the city of Vista, and the applicant-appellant for a special use permit to operate a recreational vehicle and boat storage facility with a caretaker's unit at one five five one Sycamore Drive in Vista. Mr. DeYoung is in the audience, along with Mark Lemire, the engineer of the project, and Mr. Steve Rowe, a prospective operational manager of the project, and they will all be available to the council to answer any questions that you may have. We have reviewed the staff report, as well as all other related documents, and we concur with the staff's recommendation. As a way of background, I want to comment on just a few items for clarity as it relates to the application before you this evening. This is not, and I'll repeat that, not the storage facility that some of the neighbors saw this last summer on the property. The proposal before you this evening is an attractive, heavily landscaped, professionally-managed project that will be an asset to the community and to the city. The previous project the neighbors saw, and undoubtedly will comment on this evening, was a result of a legal disagreement between the property owner and the city, and that disagreement, we believe, has been resolved to our mutual satisfaction. By undertaking the process of review through a special use permit and working with your staff, we have developed a project that is aesthetically pleasing, will potentially disappear from most views, in conjunction with the masonry wall and landscape trellis above the wall, as well as significant tree planting. The facility will help serve Vista and other parts of North County by reducing the impact of RVs and boats illegally parked on streets and sticking out of driveways throughout the community. This facility will provide substantial public improvements, increase security for the neighborhood and residents with fencing, security cameras, and a twenty-four-hour caretaker. It will be an extremely benign use in keeping with the zoning, and as the staff report mentions, it will meet or exceed all of the city's development standards. It has accepted a seven AM to eight PM operational standard, will help reduce traffic by over ninety-five percent from other potential retail uses, such as a food-drug store combination or a hotel. In essence, it will be a good neighbor to the community. We thank the City Council for the opportunity to submit this application, and we believe the project as proposed and conditioned is a significantly better project as a result of your staff's thorough analysis and hard work. I will be followed by Lee Rayner, the project's legal counsel, who has a few remarks, and we will be pleased to respond to any questions the council may have, either now or if there are no questions at this time, we would ask to be permitted to address any concerns or questions raised during the hearing prior to the close of the public hearing. Thank you.
Mr. Giddings, at the close of the public hearing, you'll be given the time to do a rebuttal or to answer questions or whatever else.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so Mr. Rayner is next?
He is, unless there's any questions currently from the council.
Any questions for Mr. Giddings? Okay, Mr. Rayner, thank you.
Yeah, I could just speak at the end of the...
Mr. Giddings, is that your proposal? Will he be doing the rebuttal?
That is not...
Okay, fine. Okay, next, we have Wen Jin Wong? I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Hi. Your Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. And whenever people ask me where I live, I tell them that I live near Palomar Airport, Carlsbad, by avoiding telling them that I live in Vista. If you want people to move to Vista and business to locate here, you must give them something to be proud of in the city of Vista. Instead, what people see is city employee walking in a random, rundown temporary building just next door. I was here a few times, and all the community and senior center in poor conditions. An example is a proposal to build a RV and boat storage yard at the gateway of Vista. Now that Melrose goes straight through from Carlsbad to Vista, this street should be the pride of Vista, so Vista can be respected as much as Carlsbad is a place to live and work. Don't make the mistakes to build this RV yard at the intersection of Melrose and Sycamore. People will be too ashamed to admit they live in Vista and will move to other part of the San Diego County. They say they're going to do this and do that, but no matter how you cut it, it is still some other people's parking yard. Why they want to build a high wall? Because they want to hide something. And why people don't...we need this RV parking space because people do not want them in their neighborhood. People do not want them in their neighborhood. So now you want to put all this junk, all this in this, in our backyard. They should put located near the railroad track, next to highway, or some rundown junkyard with car repair shops. And this proposal, and they just try to make a big buck, they do not care about the welfare of Vista. The Premier Commission has denied the proposal. Now it's up to the City Council and the Mayor. Please do not let them ruin the image of Vista, especially in this gateway of Vista, to deny this proposal. Absolutely not in our backyard and the gateway of Vista. Thank you.
Following Mr. Norris, would Jim Johnson and Larry Gerst please come up now so that they can be ready to speak? We have a number of people who are going to be speaking that would expedite matters if you would come up now, so that's Jim Johnson and Larry Gerst next.
Great, great. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members. I am also a resident of California Summit, which on this screen is to the left of Melrose, and it's not on this screen. My concern, and a lot of my community members, my neighbors are concerned, we are surrounded three sides currently with industrial and commercial. Right now, Carlsbad, two weeks ago, proposed a power plant behind us. It's just, it bothers us to no end, and I came here and I've been sitting here for a couple hours with my son, who's three years old, because I'm concerned that, again, we're going to face more industrial and commercial construction right next to us. We're going to be an island of residential and all of the surrounding commercial development. The intent of light commercial, to me, is for retail. Retail is a great cushion to cushion residential to commercial. That's what planning, that's what city and regional planners plan for, is that retail to cushion. And that's the reason why the Planning Commission, I feel, voted that down, to put more walls up around this property that already has a problem with graffiti. More walls for more graffiti. Right now, the current site has a green fence that's laden with graffiti. Nothing's going to change with putting a cement masonry wall. We're still going to have graffiti. We need to open up this community with this piece of property. We have this property and another property that is left as a lifeline for retail of our site. I would like to have my son ride his bike to a store, not pass more industrial, more commercial. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson?
Good evening. Thank you for letting me voice my concerns. First of all, I live on two one one four Opal Ridge, which, based on this map, would be probably about number four or five that backs right up to this property, starting from the left going to the right, okay? My wife and I bought that property a year, approximately a year and a half ago. Obviously, this proposal was not on the book, or we wouldn't have bought the property. More importantly, I just wanted to bring you into our home for a moment so you can understand what we're talking about here, okay? If you stand in my backyard, okay, and you walk up to my fence, based upon the proposal, currently, it would be about nine foot high with the trellis, maybe nine foot six inches high with the trellis. That would be five feet from my fence, okay? If you stand there, an RV, the proposed RVs could be up to fourteen feet high. So, basically, when you look at my property, you stand in my backyard and look, you will look right across, unless you're going to build a forest in five feet to cover this, I'm going to see a row, potentially, of RVs all the way across for five feet high. That's the first thing. The second thing is, in looking at this, if you stand in my kitchen, which, by the way, the back of my home is all pretty much windows and sliding glass door, from my kitchen to the back of those RVs...
Would you please stay at the microphone, please?
From my kitchen to the back of those RVs, what will happen is, is you'll be looking from me to that wall. So I potentially have the opportunity to sit in my home and look out my backyard, unless once again, there's going to be some serious greenery between me and five feet, okay? It's funny, for the last hour and a half, I've been sitting here for this council meeting, and I thought it, found it very interesting, by the way, but there's a common thread that all of you up here have said, economic trends and times. I can't stress to you the value of the property once this goes in. There's absolutely no question a storage and RV yard will not increase our property values. There's two hundred homes in the community that sits next to this thing. Already, there are many homes that have been on the market for over a year and a half. They're already on a short sale posted all over. I find it very hard to believe that this proposal is going to give any value to them. I believe it'll be the final nail in the coffin to bring these property values well below what would ever be a recovery level in these times, or any times. Second of all, as far as the gateway to the city of Vista, I agree, since Melrose has gone through, no question that this is the gateway into the city. It's funny, you drive up and down Palomar Airport Road, you look at all the wonderful communities that have been built there. Also, what's impressive is the entrances to those communities. No one has a storage yard or an RV yard to come on in. Second of all, I think everybody here has done a great job with the business park itself. It feels good, you come into it. This is nowhere near to that level, okay? There's no question, I find it hard to believe that the city of Vista will be able to compete with the surrounding communities as far as business and attracting future residents with this on that corner.
Mr. Johnson, could you please conclude?
Thank you.
Just one question. The property is zoned commercial, you realize that?
I understand that.
And so that you would not have an objection to commercial development of that property?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gerst?
Thanks for having me here. My name's Larry Gerst. I live on, live at twenty-one oh five Opal Ridge. I want to thank each of you for having me, have the opportunity to come up here and say something about an RV storage facility. To me, it's beyond an RV storage facility. My family and I lived in Encinitas for ten years, loved it. Had to move back to LA for two years to come back to San Diego because we love it here. We searched Carlsbad, San Marcos, all the communities. We found the perfect community we felt for us, and that's Opal Ridge, right behind, right across the wall from this proposed project. Last thing in the world I could ever conceive is three, four hundred RVs, trucks, trailers, just, it just isn't keeping with the beautiful community that we chose. I mean, you're talking Shadow Ridge, you're talking beautiful homes and nice businesses, doctor's offices and so much. Trailer, this is just a glorified trailer park to me. This isn't, this, this doesn't fit our community at all. It's just, it's just incredible. You're going to have, you're going to have all different levels of trucks. There's a gigantic slope that comes down. I don't care what direction you have. If you have a nine-foot wall, you're going to still see RVs, trucks, trailers, and you're going to have people out there with their boats, starting them up in the daytime just to clear out the engines. You're going to have people before seven o'clock driving around, the first place they're going to drive into, you can't park in the street on Melrose or Sycamore, so they're just going to come into our neighborhood and probably park their vehicles overnight waiting till seven o'clock. I mean, there's a lot of reasons for not having this. You're going to have the beep 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 noises of vehicles backing up just in that parking area. You've got the gravel, you've got three to four hundred vehicles filled with vehicle. What about fires? I know we're going to have a new fire department down the street, that's going to be great, but an explosive fire right across, I have a five-year-old, I wouldn't have moved to this house a year and a half ago if I'd known this was going to. I don't care about commercial properties, I don't care, there's a lot of good businesses you can put in there. Look at everything else that's around us, it's gorgeous. I don't think you'd put this up on Shadow Ridge and Melrose. I don't think this business would exist there. I don't even think you would even consider having it, and to have it here in our neighborhood and to subject us to all the plight this is. I mean, when I go to Phoenix and I drive by Yuma, I see all these RVs parked there. That's a horrible sight. I don't care how many trees you make, how high you build that building, it's going to be ugly, and it's just a travesty that it would ever be considered. I don't even think it should have got off to begin with. This should never be considered for South Vista. That's one of the, I mean, there is no place on the planet Earth that I'd rather live than where I live now, but that RV park, if I could sell my home and not lose a ton of money, I'd be out of here if you put that in there, and that's how I feel.
Thank you. The next three would be Jackie Johnson, Chuck Rabel, and Vernon Bachover. If those three individuals, please come forward.
I'm Jackie, so I guess I'm going first, and forgive me if I sound repetitive. I guess I should have tried to draw the number one card, but it sounds like we all kind of are thinking on the same terms. My belief is that prospective residences and...
You can just, you can say amen to what's been said before.
Amen, and sit down. I know that's what she would really like to hear, but I've written this, I'm going to read it. Perspective residences, residents and businesses have a choice. They can go south on Melrose into San Marcos-Carlsbad and find beautifully landscaped communities and shopping areas being built to offer residences, residents new upscale conveniences and services. Or they can turn north on Melrose and enter Vista. How do we want to greet those people? So far, Vista has done a great job of blending the business park area into residential community that boasts golf courses and nice, safe schools. I am truly surprised that Vista would even consider putting a storage facility on the last highly visible corner along Melrose. This street, especially this corner, sets the tone of what Vista is all about. Let's not send prospective residences, residents and businesses to Carlsbad by one bad decision. I know the plan calls for a big wall with a big berm and even something on top of that wall. My question is, why would we consider a project that needs a huge, monstrous wall to hide it? There are more appropriate places to put an RV and miscellaneous storage. Let's use this lot to enhance our city and not to hide a gravel lot of unused vehicles. Yes, I knew when I bought my house... to hide a gravel lot of unused vehicles. Yes, I knew when I bought my house, something would be built on this empty lot, but I believe the city planners, the visionaries of Vista, would use this location to offer its residents new, updated, upscale conveniences like our bordering city only four blocks away. I trust all on this council will do the right thing for our city, knowing your decision will impact the image of Vista for infinite years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rabel?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm here on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce of Vista. Back in February of this 2008, while the city was amending the zoning on C2 and C3 properties, including Mr. DeJong, we, we passed a resolution, basically saying, hey, we agree that the zone, with the zoning change, but we need to respect the property rights of Mr. DeJong, who was, prior to that, in late 2007, going through the city's process. And therefore, we, we, although we approved the zoning change, we wanted Mr. DeJong's property to be exempt. And it's not often that you have a chance to, for a do-over, but tonight you have a chance for a do-over. And in the interim, the economy's not gotten any better, and the likelihood of, of what the surrounding community might want to see is just not gonna happen in the short term. In the near term, maybe not in my lifetime. I'm somewhat surprised, if you will, that the community did come together on this, because this is the same neighborhood that I worked, tried to work back in 2001, 2000, when the city decided to change the zoning on a piece of property that's now occupied by Home Depot. We were told then, hey, live with it. That community and that gateway's gonna change. I don't mean to be crass to the, to my neighbors, but, because I am down there every, every day, during the day, right across from Home Depot. And one of the things that we did succeed in is that because we did raise a stink, Home Depot decided to, to put the trash compactor on the other end of the property, as opposed to across the street where they had it planned. These folks made a stink, and accommodations have been made, and this project should go forward. Again, you, you don't often get a chance for a do-over. Let's do the right thing this time and approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel. Vernon Bachover? And, excuse me, the next three would be Barbara Bachover, Ken Stanwood, and Nikita Hobson. If they'd please come forward. Please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We live the third lot on the ridge from the Mel, from Melrose. We've owned that property for 15 years. And I don't care what action you guys have done prior to this, we're here to, basically, I hope you recognize your planning council's decision of not awarding this project. The property values that you're gonna lose revenue on in the, in the future, I mean, these people can't make up enough of those funds for you to make that viable. As far as making something right, there is, there's nothing right about this project. I can see no benefits to the, to the community of Vista. There's no positives about this project. You can't hide it. You can't cover it up. You can't paint it. And I'm like my predecessors here, 15 years ago, and I'd known we would be here. For this type of project, I wouldn't have purchased. I've done some surveys, some actual driving around, looking at storage and RV facilities. They all either look like prisons or junkyards. No residences around them. So please, don't strap us with a junkyard or prison. And like I say, there's no way they can cover it up with trees or anything. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bachover. Barbara Bachover?
Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak before you this evening. I reside with my husband at 2116 Opal Ridge, and we've lived there for 15 years. We've been proud residents of Vista for over 25 years. The Shadow Ridge community has earned a great reputation over the years, since, and we have watched it be developed from raw land to what it's become today. It offers a safe and beautiful development for young and old alike. It is with this in mind that I vehemently oppose the possibility of destroying this image with a vehicle and a boat junkyard at the very entrance to our community. Despite the owner's plans and pictures, there is absolutely no way to disguise this project from people entering our city. There is no wall high enough, or tree high enough, to hide this atrocity. With such massive walls, it would make you think you're, have a prison within your city limits. The impact of such a project would dearly cost the city of Vista in the long run. I do not think people would be inclined to buy, rent, or own a business in a city where the planning could go so wrong if there were to be such an appalling project approved at the city's gateway. We would wind up being the recipient of our neighboring community's junk. We commit, we compete with the upgrades that Carlsbad and San Marcos have done, and I think this corner should represent light projects that those cities have done in their visible and important intersections. Your decision here tonight will have an important impact on the future of all Vista residents, and in particular, us residents of Shadow Ridge and the Cassielos Development. As the stewards of the residents of Vista, I am asking, no, I'm pleading with you to say no to this appeal. The Planning Commission had it right the first time. Please support your Planning Commission's decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Stanwood, please?
Hi. My wife and I live at 2086 Ridgeline, which is the street that runs south to north on the right-hand side of the picture. We back up to the visiting irrigation district building. And we actually just purchased that house in June of this year, so, you know, there are some houses selling in the neighborhood. We might have had second thoughts about purchasing it then, if we had known that this was the type of project that was going to be there. We assumed there'd be something more reasonable, like retail to have a smooth transition between the residential and the business park area. It's a very nice-looking business park. It'd be a shame to have what's butted up against the residential area to be less attractive than what's considered light industrial across the street from that. We feel that with retail or something similar, you could get visitors from the Bresky Ranch area that would come there, potentially spend money, raise tax revenues for the city of Vista that otherwise might go the other direction, with people from this neighborhood going to Bresky Ranch to take advantage of the nice, new stores that are being put in, and, and other things. And we, we oppose this project because it will be an eyesore. It will take the property values down. They're already down quite a ways, we know, having just bought a house in the neighborhood. And our house has depreciated in value significantly since we purchased it in, in June. And we'd like to, you know, see the trend in our neighborhood, be that it, that it become more desirable, or at least become no less desirable than it is currently. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nikita Hobson, and then following Ms. Hobson, we'll have John Liu, Carolyn Liu, and Pam Connolly.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Nikita Hobson. I live at 2070 Ridgeline Avenue, and I'm speaking tonight as representative of South Vista Communities. South Vista Communities is comprised of approximately 20 to 25 neighborhoods south of Highway 78, and our mission is to improve and enhance the, and protect the quality of life in South Vista. South Vista Communities supports this project. We think it would be a very good thing for our neighborhood. It is a low-impact project that will have less negative impacts on our community than practically any other kind of proposal that could come up. We, it will bring low traffic, only a couple dozen trips per day instead of thousands. It will have low noise impacts because of the lack of activity there. And also, with the screening wall and the lush landscaping, it will actually reduce the amount of noise that the neighbors hear from, the traffic noise from Melrose and Sycamore. It has set operating hours, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, rather than 24 hours a day. It provides added security to the neighbors. The limited access to the property will really deter intruder access, and in addition, the security systems, and the fact that a resident manager will be there. The passive use of the land and the construction design will result, result in minimal impacts on the environment. It's an attractive facility with very nice architectural features, lush landscaping, and it'll look, from the outside, very much like an upscale gated community. With the grading plan, the walls, trellises, and extensive landscaping with, with almost 300 very mature trees, views of the interior will be very, very limited or nonexistent. Finally, the RV boat storage facility will have far fewer negative impacts on the neighborhood than any other project that could conceivably be proposed. This is commercial land. It is going to be development, developed. We all knew that when we bought our homes, and I think this is kind of our one lucky chance to get a very low-impact, attractive project, rather than having, the only other proposal that I've heard for using that land was a hotel, a supermarket, a high-volume restaurant, and other retail activities. And, I mean, I personally think the RV boat yard is far superior to that, and I urge the City Council to approve the project. Thank you.
Next would be John Liu.
Would it be all right if I had my wife speak before me? She's right after me.
Sure.
Ladies first.
Learn well.
Good evening, Mayor Vance and City Council members. My name is Carolyn Liu, and I live at 2110 Opal Ridge in Vista. My husband, John, and I have lived in Vista since 1993 with our two young boys. We are committed to the future of the city of Vista, so much so that just over a year ago, we convinced my elderly parents to move in next door to us, so that we could look after them in the coming years. Vista is our home, and we intend to bring our children up here amongst family, in a safe environment of which we can be proud. It is with this in mind that we strongly urge you to deny the appeal for this project. I'm here with many of my neighbors, many of who attended two neighborhood meetings held at my home, to discuss our issues with this proposed business. The issues I will cover are, number one, lack of consistency with the general plan and city image. Number two, incompatibility with surrounding businesses and residential areas. Number three, strong potential fire hazard and safe haven for vermin. And number four, encroachment of property lines. And number five, inadequate operational planning. Number one, lack of consistency with the general plan and city image. With the completion of South Melrose Drive, the intersection with Sycamore Avenue sees more traffic than in years past. This intersection is no longer an isolated rural area at the end of a long road. It is part of a major traffic artery, and essentially has become the gateway into our city from the upper-tier homes in Carlsbad. This is a very different situation than when this area was first zoned as C2. An RV and boat storage yard at this location, where it would be seen by thousands of people entering the city along South Melrose Drive, would not be consistent with the image of Vista as a progressive, well-planned community. It would be an eyesore, even with the proposed improvements. Because of the elevation changes in viewing angles, and sheer size of the lot, the majority of the storage yard, a veritable sea of RVs and various vehicles, would be clearly seen from South Melrose going north, the west side of South Melrose, near the Sycamore intersection looking east, Sycamore Avenue from above the hill near Engineer Street looking west, and all second-story homes directly north and west of the storage yard, including our property. Number two, incompatibility with surrounding businesses and residential areas. An RV and boat storage yard at this location does not fit in with the surrounding businesses and family-oriented neighborhoods and homes. Imagine having approximately 400 tall RVs within five feet of your backyard fence. This would be a homeowner's nightmare. It doesn't complement any of the businesses in the immediate area, especially the new, well-designed medical buildings on the southwest corner, and the planned Marriott hotels and upscale restaurants. Number four, strong potential fire hazard and safe haven for vermin. All of the residents on the northern edge of the proposed RV and storage have wooden fences along the property line. The development plan calls for only a five-foot setback between this property line and the masonry wall. The developer has proposed planting eight-foot-tall canary pine trees in this gap.
Mrs. Liu, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Liu?
Thank you. My name is John Liu, and I live at 2110 Opal Ridge, with my wife, obviously. And let me pick up where she, she left off. So one of the concerns we have, and, and so, first off, I'm gonna say amen, right, to the previous people. I think you know my position on this. Let me pick up where my wife left off. You know, one of the observations I would make about the, the property, the setback from the property line is that currently the plan only calls for about a five-foot setback, with canary pines being planted in the gap between our fence line and the wall. Now, that's only a five-foot gap, and as the trees get larger, basically, that's gonna wind up blocking access. So even though there's a requirement for, obviously, the property owner to keep that area clear, there's no room. The trees are gonna grow to over five feet diameter fairly quickly, and that whole area's gonna fill up with pine nails and pine cones and trash that gets blown in there. And, you know, this whole area's being considered to be a potential high-fire hazard area. And I, I just find it hard to believe that we would allow something like this to be built, where cigarette butt tossed over the wall could literally torch our entire fence. So that's, that's what my wife was getting at. She also was gonna make some observations about the operational aspects of it. You know, if you look at the traffic patterns that are outlined in the application, it would appear that the average traffic value is gonna be very low, and consequently, there should be a low impact. But let's not forget, these are recreational vehicles which will be pulled out prior to weekends and holidays. So that means you, let's say, 15, 20% of the vehicles are gonna try and exit or be picked up out of the RV yard within a 24-hour period prior to weekends and after weekends. And if you look at the current plan, there's probably not enough space to allow that number of vehicles to be staged to either come out of the yard or be put in. So that's one of the, that's what my wife was referring to when she talked about the operational planning, that we don't think they've done a good job of planning that out. There either needs to be more planning area, parking area in the lot, or they need to do something about reducing the number of vehicles in there. So I, I put together a PowerPoint presentation. Let's see. I was, we've already talked about the setback, and I know I only have three minutes, so I'm gonna skip through that. What I wanted to do was actually spend a couple of times talking about more technical issues related to some of the things that were presented in the application. Now, on this particular slide, I think you've seen this in the application, and it's also up on the wall, the illustration, the image in the upper-left-hand corner is the, the view that was presented in the application of the intersection of Melrose. Now, it's clear to anyone that lives in that area that this is taken with a wide-angle lens, and doesn't really give you an accurate picture of the proportion of what we're talking about. So what I did was, on Friday, I went out and took a picture using a normal lens, so this is the normal perspective of what you would see standing there with your naked eye. And as you can see, it, it's a very different image, okay? The intersection is much smaller-- The intersection is much smaller than it appears in the image, and those red arrows that I've added to them, to the lower image, basically shows you how tall the berm plus the wall plus the trellis would be. Now, admittedly, there's gonna be a little bit more setback than it show, but you can see that it's really quite an imposing, gonna be some imposing structure, anywhere from three to five times as tall as a vehicle's passing on the street. So that's one thing to consider. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the line of sight from the northern property line. Okay, so far, we've talked about how the view from the street is going to be mitigated by the trees and the landscaping they put in. But what we haven't seen, or there hasn't been any discussion of what we as a property owners on Opal Ridge will see. And because the line-of-sight diagrams that are in the application are accurate as shown, but they're incomplete, because they only show one view on the eastern end of the property, and they don't show the full impact of what we're gonna see. So in this particular map, the diagram, the line-of-sight diagram in the application is basically what you'd see along Line AA. We know this because that's the only place in the lot in which vehicles are parked at a right angle to the wall. And that's actually the most favorable view from the northern property line, but actually, the people in the central and western portion of the property line, which is where I live, are gonna be looking at what we see in Line BP. This next diagram basically shows how I view what we would see. I'm sorry if I'm running over.
Does the council want to grant him any extra time?
Yes, please.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead.
Thank you.
We'll grant you a little extra time. You've done a lot of work on this presentation, it's obvious.
Thank you. So on this particular slide, you can see, the diagram at the top was actually included in the application, and it sort of implies by looking at it, you'd only see a portion of the RV. But that's because they truncate the view line at the top of the trellis. Now, we all know that trellises are gonna be open, and no matter how dense you plant anything, you're always gonna have gaps in there. So in reality, what people on the second floor are gonna see is they're actually gonna be able to see down to the top of the wall, which means that in this particular view, which again is only on the eastern end of the lot, they're still gonna be able to see most of the RV. This is actually the view that we would see in the central and western portions of the property line. Okay, if you look at, go back to the original map, you'd see that the vehicles basically parking opposite twenty-one-oh-four through twenty-one-eighteen Opal Ridge are gonna be allowed to park parallel to the property line, not at a right angle to it. And it's gonna be twenty-five feet away from the wall. So if you look at this sort of view line, basically, we're gonna see the very first vehicle, complete vehicle broadside. And what, the other thing that I did in this diagram, and I know this is gonna be sort of hard to see, is the application doesn't show you the full scope of what we're gonna see out of our second-floor window. Now, in this diagram, the top line shows the BP view line that I had on the map. That little box on the right and those little stick figures are the house and the people from the previous page. And what you can see is, this is drawn to scale, the lot is actually about five hundred feet wide at this point, and encompasses almost thirty-two rows of RVs. So what this would say is that, on the second floor of my house, looking out the back window, I'm gonna be able to see thirty-two rows. And that's, and that's, I'll go into second, the issue with the trees that they wanna put in to mitigate the view. But you can see, it's really gonna be quite extensive. Okay, so what I did was, I did a little photo shopping. So this is the view out of my second-floor window, okay? And this is with a normal lens, so this is how I actually see the image. So you can see Sycamore very clearly in the south, and you can see the whole, full extent of the lot. You can see the entrance on Hot Spring Way off on the left, and Melrose off on the right. So what I did was, I went in and I superimposed as best I could to scale what my view out the back window is gonna look like. Okay? You can see that the, and so I didn't do a good job with the masonry wall, but you can see that with a five-foot setback to the wall from my fence line, you know, the trees are never really gonna be allowed to grow much more than five feet in diameter because they've been planted in the gap. They're being planted eighteen-foot apart. There's gonna be a thirteen-foot gap. We're never gonna let the trees get bigger than five feet in diameter because it's gonna encroach on our property line, drop pine needles and pine cones, all sorts of junk in our yard. So the problem with this now, then, is you can see that the way they've basically stacked the trees will have a thirteen-foot gap between them, clear view of the line, and these are all actually drawn to scale. Those little gray cubes are actually the size of a Winnebago, I think it's like a Vantage, one of their top-end models. But you can see the visual impact of this. And so the trees, and so, like I said, they may have done a good job along Sycamore and Melrose to mitigate the view from the street, but from the northern property line, our view, it's inadequate.
Mr. Liu, we've given you some extra time. I think maybe you better wrap it up.
Well, and that's it.
Mr. Lopez has a question?
Sure.
You said the trees that outskirts, they'll only be five feet in diameter. Trees grow more than five feet in diameter.
That's right. But where they've asked to place the trees is in the intervening gap between the masonry wall and our property line. And so, so that would only allow them to grow about five feet in diameter. Otherwise, they're gonna encroach on our property.
And on the plan that shows it has trees in between, you didn't show that on your scale here.
Yeah, so they might be on the opposite side of the wall.
No, but you don't show any landscaping inside the, inside the area where the RVs are gonna be.
Yeah.
It has, it has plans, two areas going down showing that it has trees, but you don't show that here. Is that correct, John?
There are some slow plantings that would occur in most areas of the site. There is one area, I don't know if it's behind Mr. Liu's residence, where there would just be a five-foot area where the landscaping is proposed.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Liu, we have another question here. Mrs. Ritter?
I just have a question from whoever. Why would you put an extra, like the one wall and then a spot and then the fence? Doesn't that create a spot where it collects?
That was my point, the way the plan is curmated out.
This is for staff, I'm sorry, Mr. Liu.
Whoever. John, why do they put a wall like that? Why do they put two walls?
The one wall is the property line where the residence's fence currently is located. The other wall for the project would be located five feet back, and it would be a higher wall to provide additional screening.
Right, like I said, our main concern has to do with, you know, what goes on in that five feet.
But doesn't that, like, doesn't that create a place in there where it doesn't get clean and weeds grow and things? I mean, is there, is there access from some of the street or somewhere to come in here?
It would be a five-foot area that the applicant would be responsible for maintaining.
And how would they get in there?
They would have to get in via the space between the wall and the existing fence.
Is there a gate somewhere in there to get in there?
I don't believe they're proposing a gate, although we can defer to the applicant to find out if that's the case, but they would have to access that.
Thank you, Mr. Liu. Okay, next is Pam Connolly.
Yes, thank you very much. I live at twenty-one-oh-six Opal Ridge, right on the line. And although the view would be very offensive and would lower our property value, I think the most important thing is the incongruity with the area. It's a main gateway into Vista. We don't really want to have a hodgepodge of vehicles in that lot. The way the lot is sloped, you would never be able to camouflage what was in that area. And if they were gonna put a stone wall up, that would just invite graffiti. There's already graffiti up on the fabric now. So I just wanna reiterate what everybody has said, and I'm very concerned about our property value and, and the Vista as a whole, as it being, this lot is a gateway to the city and is an important thing to see as you first go in. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next three would be Mr. Kwong Trin, Samuel Henshi, and Rick Ryerson. Mr. Kwong Trin? I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, Ms. Mayor and council members. I live in two-one-oh-four Opal Ridge. Behind of my property is the proposal they go to build their RVs. I don't agree with them. I oppose them, and I agree with my neighborhoods. That's, if they go to put the RV and go over there, I think the property value will be dropped, and the city will, don't, don't get any revenue. The city wouldn't have any profits for that. That's, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Henshi?
Hershey, Samuel Hershey.
I'm sorry.
Mayor and council members. I just couldn't agree more with those that are opposed to this RV storage lot in this area. For years, we've been waiting for some attractive small restaurants to go in or businesses. We have a special-needs child, and we can't think of anything more we would love to do than to have the neighborhood feel of being able to walk out of our area with him in his wheelchair and visit a Starbucks or Trader Joe's or something like that. It's interesting, as we drive down Palomar Airport Road, that that's what we see Carlsbad putting in by these attractive new homes that are being built. And we would like that feel for Vista. I could not agree more with those that are opposed to this, to the approval of this. I, too, find myself at times when I'm asked where I live, almost saying, gee, I wish I could say Carlsbad. But I would like to see Vista come up in a more credible way, and we have an opportunity for that here at the gateway to the entrance to our city. The houses in the Cielos community look attractive, they're built well. I agree that I believe we're going to see these RVs before the lot opens up and after it closes, probably parking in our neighborhood. There isn't adequate space to pre-stage whether they're gonna come in or go out. The other thing is, there was a comment made by the first presenter that was for this project, that it would remove illegal RVs illegally parked. We don't have any illegally parked RVs in the Cielos community. There are none. You could drive there, through there tonight and see this. Perhaps in other communities they are, but we're just simply going to be bringing other people's trailers into our area. And the slope, if you were to go across the street on the west side of Melrose where the Chevron station is, and the neighbors that are over there, and look up that slope, there's no way you could build a wall or a trellis high enough to block the view. It just absolutely will impact the area. The other thing is, I've noticed where RV storage lots are located in Carlsbad, and I also noticed one the other day in Oceanside. In Carlsbad, there's one off Palomar Airport Road, not very far from Costco, and it's way down in a ravine, you can barely see it. It's way out of sight. They planned it well. In Oceanside, I was going down Seventy-six the other day toward Bonzel, and I noticed up on the left, there is a RV storage lot, and you can see straight into it, and it just looks, it makes the whole field junky. And you have Shadow Ridge there, it's an attractive community. Please help maintain the integrity of this area of the city of Vista. I think it's a great place to continue to make a statement as to how great Vista is, and I'd hate to see it really decrease in that way. The other thing is that, I was here the other day when there was a talk about the-
Your time is up.
Okay, propane tanks, high-fire zone, you're gonna make it worse for us.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lopez, you're on the thing. Did you have something else you want to say?
No.
Okay, I guess Mr. Rick Ryerson's not here, so.
I'm here, sorry. I'm gonna first, but I'll just make a few quick comments. And I made myself available to meet the neighbors and go over the logic that we had in planning the project. And the five-feet setback was not required. We could've put the fence, the masonry fence, right on the property line. We set that back, and we're offering prescriptive rights so that the people, if they wanted to, we would let them use that space, rather than having a double fence there. And that was in the initial presentations that we made to the community. By setting it back, it does offer additional screening. Additionally, if you look at the grades along there, everybody talks about the slope. If you look at the base parking area to the top of where the existing fences are, it's considerably below grade. So you not only have the six feet of fence, you have the additional below-grade grading, which is shown on the drawings here that Mr. Connolly has. So it's, also, they're showing probably that, you know, the worst size equipment there. The average project has about seventeen, twenty percent of motorized vehicles. The rest are boats or trailers, and most of those don't exceed ten feet. I certainly, you know, being called junk, I think there's kind of a knee-jerk reaction to what was parked there, and it's hard to get that out of your mind. But we designed this with a pretty good setback, and it's at a grade along the street that provides very adequate screening for anything behind it. And we're emulating a high-end walled community. And people coming down the street would never know what's in there if you didn't stop at Hot Spring Way and see that it's an RV place. There is another storage area off Lupine Hills that's part of Shadow Ridge, and nobody knows it's there, you know, because it's very benign use, and it's also inadequate for the Shadow Ridge residents there. It's full, and there's a waiting list for most sizes. And that's about it. I support the staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Okay, the last person will be Mr. Lee Rayner for a chance to rebut. Marcy, this is not time. I don't have any other speaker slips from anyone else, so, okay, Mr. Rayner.
Good evening. My name is Lee Rayner. I'm with White and Bright, nine-seventy Canterbury Place in Escondido, representing R.D. Young and Liberty Family Partnership. Good evening, City Manager Geldert, Mayor Vance, council members. I have read the various letters that have been submitted in opposition, and certainly have listened to the public comments tonight. I'd address them under two broad categories: concerns about diminished value of the homes and concerns about public safety. As to diminished values, I would submit that many comments have been triggered by the appearance of the property earlier this year. While I contend that that use is a legitimate alternative that may still be available to my client, as was stressed earlier, I would certainly reiterate, that is not the project that is here before you tonight. We've worked hard with city staff to gain their recommendation and with South Vista Communities to gain their support on this project, and we've made various concessions to minimize the impact and to improve the appearance of this project. There've been various references to junk that have been made. Just for a point of reference, the operational procedures that will be in place in this project will be professionally operated, will require vehicles to be in good running order, to be currently registered, and no inoperable vehicles will be allowed on the property. In fact, our consultant for operations said that if you don't wanna own it, you don't let it in there. So we're certainly cognizant of the problem with older recreational vehicles being abandoned, being placed in storage, and being inoperable. That is not how this project is being proposed to be operated. For homes bordering this commercially-zoned property, I would submit to you that any diminution in value or effect of being next to a commercial property has always been taken into consideration in the valuation of those homes, just as a home that borders a green space or dedicated open space would have that fact reflected in the sales and prior transactions. There were comments made about the views from the backyards, and one gentleman disputed the visual simulations that have been prepared. I would note that we did not prepare those visual simulations. Those visual simulations were prepared by the vendor. Those visual simulations were prepared by the vendor, recommended by the city, and we believe they're prepared in good faith and accurately depict what the project will look like when it's landscaped. The average height of recreational vehicles is not 14 foot, it's more like 10 and 1/2 feet. The industry average for storage facilities, as was mentioned, probably only about 20% will actually be RVs, 63% are trailers, 17% are boats. I'd also point out, several of the residents overlooking this property have suggested that they would prefer retail there. With this project, no one's going to be looking down into their bedrooms, into their backyards, into their living rooms, from this project. But any retail project that was two stories or higher would be looking into their backyards. So while some people have suggested that this is an undesirable project because of the visual impact from their backyards, I'd submit to you that alternate projects would be more objectionable to many people because of the more invasive nature of them. Comparing retail to this use of the property, I'd point out that Home Depot operates from 6:00 in the morning to 10:00 p.m. at night, six days a week. Sunday, they have reduced hours. They also take deliveries all during their time of operation. The lights that are throughout their parking lot are on after 10:00 p.m. at night when they close. Stater Brothers operates from 6:00 in the morning to 11:00 at night, seven days a week, and their lights are on all night because when the store closes at 11:00 p.m., the stalkers come in and they work from 11:00 p.m. until the following morning. Stater Brothers typically has their deliveries at about 5:00 a.m. Their delivery is on the backside of the building, as it is at Home Depot, and most retail locations have the delivery, the trash pickup, the compaction, all on the backsides of the buildings, not on the parking sides where the customers come in. In this instance, the backside of the project would be facing those neighbors. There's increased security with this project as opposed to other retail uses because this will be fully gated, fully secured. There will be security cameras, there'll be very low light impact. This project, we don't believe will have a negative impact on the property. Let me briefly just address a couple of the public safety concerns that have been raised. There are concerns that have been stated about propane tanks and gasoline. I'd point out that most of us have propane tanks in our barbecues, sitting outside our kitchen door, or sitting in the garage. We have cars in our garages, very often under our bedrooms, that are full of gasoline. Many of the homes here in Vista, my house, has a large propane tank adjacent to it. This project has been reviewed by the fire department for safety. There are appropriate safety measures that have been put in place for it. All of the driveways are paved. Parking spaces are permeable gravel, which staff supports because it reduces the potential for runoff, it's environmentally friendly. The staging areas have been suggested that they're going to overflow into the streets, that there's going to be problems with that. One thing this project does have is plenty of parking space. It will be professionally managed. It's not good business practice to make customers wait or have difficulty getting in or out of your business. The reality is that the pickups and the drop-offs during the operation of this project are spread out over several days, even for a busy weekend, a Labor Day weekend. People come and pick their RVs up a couple of days beforehand, they drop them off a couple of days later. So the impact for even a high use is spread out. I'll share you one little secret that the RV salesmen certainly don't mention in their sales pitch, but that anyone who's owned an RV can appreciate the truth of, and that is that RVs are used an average of 23 days a year. So what you have the rest of the time is the RVs in storage. So there isn't a lot of in-and-out traffic, and that, I think, is why South Vista Communities recognizes this as such a low-impact project. We're sensitive to the concerns of the neighbors. We believe that the project has a design that will minimize the visual impact, and it'll be an attractive addition to the neighborhood. We have an operational plan that's compatible with the neighborhood. It won't disturb them at night like a retail operation would. This project provides an ideal buffer and transition for this location, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. We'd appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank all of those that made presentations this evening. You did a very good job, and I was very impressed with the presentations. And Mr. Lou, I want to give you a special star. That was one of the best presentations I think I've ever seen in all my years in local government. Okay, we've heard from you now, it's time for us to discuss the matter and to make a decision. So with that, Mr. Lopez, you're first up.
Thank you, Mayor. John, these questions are for you, okay? On page, Exhibit B, this one right here? Mm-hmm. So the page 160, if you want to look at it.
160?
Yeah, 160.
With landscaping?
If you want to look at it. Showing the grade, the way they're grading this thing, it looks like it's going to be in different, that's it, I think, let's see. It shows that there's different grades there. When you look at the back part, John, from here to here, where it shows the different, those cuts, how many feet are those cuts from the top of the grade down to the bottom? Because I don't have numbers on this, and they're too small, I can't tell.
At the steepest part, they're about 10 feet.
Okay, so at the steepest part, they're 10 feet. Now, 10 feet, and then on top of that, you have a 6-foot wall?
That's correct.
Okay. On top of that, you have a 4-foot or-
42-inch high trellis.
42 trellis, okay. So along that opal area. Today, I went to the house in the corner, and I went to the man's backyard, and I looked out past his back wall, and I'm too short to look over his wall. I had to get up on top of a box to look outside his wall. But I did notice when I did move the fence, it looked like the fence was falling down, so those fences not in good shape. Now, I've looked at this, the, some of those motorhomes are, let's say, 14 feet?
I think the gentleman referenced the average is about 10 and 1/2 feet.
10 and 1/2 feet. Now-
Average, it could be higher.
There's areas here that are a lot lower, and these higher-type vehicles that are at least 14 feet could be put in a section where they are a deeper area, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So have you looked at, when you were planning this, that the area be marked as a certain size, height, motorhomes and certain height, the different areas, the lower ones is where the bigger ones go, the higher is where the, you know, the smaller ones are? Has that been looked at at all?
No, we did not provide any direction to the applicant on that.
So that can be looked at, correct?
Sure.
Okay. Now, the front of the, on Melrose, you have a meandering, is that the fence?
That's a slope, and the fence would be at the top of that slope.
Okay, so that slope will be how high?
Five feet.
Five feet. So you got five feet, you got, the slope will meander according to that right there, like that?
That's correct.
So the fence will be meandering too?
That's correct.
So you have a 5-foot slope, you have a 6-foot fence, and a 42-inch trellis?
Yes.
So on the other side of that, how many feet is that?
On the other side, meaning on the project side?
On the project side, yeah, right in here.
Well, the project side is going to be at grade, so it would be the 6-foot-high wall with the 42-inch trellis.
Plus, oh, oh, that-
In other words, it doesn't drop down 5 feet on the other side?
Won't drop down 5 feet on the other side?
No, that's a pad. So the slope slopes up 5 feet, and then there's a pad which the wall would be constructed on. So if the motorhome was parked behind that wall, it would be parked behind a 6-foot wall with a 42-inch trellis.
So the areas that would have a less view of the bigger ones would be right down the center, is that correct?
That's correct, and the other areas where the slopes are shown in the eastern corner and adjacent to the two slopes internally.
Mm-hmm. When you're going down Airport Road, right when you turn left to Melrose, if you kept going towards San Marcos, on the right-hand side, they have a masonry wall that goes all along the airport road, and it hides these homes or duplexes or apartments or homes, whatever they are. Those are about seven or eight, nine-feet walls? Do you know which ones I'm talking about?
I don't. If you're referring to the ones on Palomar Airport Road on the south side of the street-
Yes.
Those are about 6-foot-high walls.
Six feet. Now, those are very attractive with all the landscaping in front of them. But, excuse me, I'm kind of under the weather today, so... I remember when I was on the planning commission when Home Depot came in, and the people were against Home Depot there, and they mentioned that the values would be going down. Is there any way that you know, or we've been able to keep track that their values went down, John, there during that time?
No, we have not kept track of that. The values have gone down as a result of the market, but there's no way to know whether that was affiliated with the Home Depot project or not.
I'll stop there.
Okay, Mr. Gronky?
Thank you, dear. Here with me, Mr. Connolly. I just want to just announce with all the speakers here, trying to address their concerns. First concern I have is, why isn't there a commercial development proposed at the site? It seems like it's an ideal location for that. Do we have some history?
Was there a time when commercial developments were proposed for the site, and what happened in those conversations?
Nothing formal has been submitted on this site, with the exception of this application. We have had some discussions with the property owner about some previous developments, a supermarket, a hotel, and some other retail-type uses. The applicant has indicated recently that because of the city's traffic-impact fees, that they can't afford to develop the site with those types of uses.
Okay, so are traffic-impact fees were certainly an indicator of why the discussion went to RV park?
That had a major impact, according to the applicant.
Okay, okay. Now, this went before our planning commission just recently. Why did they deny it? What was the condition?
The primary reasons from the commission were the fact that this is a gateway to the city, and they thought that this wasn't an appropriate use for the location that it's in, at one of the city's primary gateways.
Okay, okay. And we have a special use permit that we're talking about tonight on this property.
That's correct.
What leeway do we have with our special use permit? We can't say that we can determine what goes on this property.
With a special use permit, you have the ability to impose any kind of operational conditions that would govern the use of the site, or the ultimate decision is you could deny it.
So if they were going to go through with the RV park, we could place a number of conditions on them using our special use ordinance?
That's what we've done in this case, that's correct.
Okay. Well, let's talk about some of those conditions. I'm to understand that this doesn't have asphalt, the entire property, but rather has DG or some type of gravel?
That's correct, a gravel surface.
And why would they want to do something like that? Wouldn't you prefer to have this on top of asphalt to keep leakage into the ground and so forth?
We actually would prefer a permeable surface in order to reduce the amount of stormwater that would be produced by development of the property.
Okay. I'd like to ask that of the applicant. How about lighting? Is there an overflow of lighting? Most commercial properties, you know, the local neighborhoods have to deal with that. They have to deal with the light overflow into their residences. Are we going to see that here, or have they taken that into consideration?
The applicant is not proposing any internal lighting, with the exception of the area around their office and caretaker's residence.
And so what special, what speciality do they have there?
The requirement in the code is that it be directed down and shielded to eliminate glare on adjacent properties, but considering the distance, we'll be evaluating that. If the project were to be approved, we'd be evaluating that at the time that they submit their building plans for the lighting to verify that the light levels are only what's needed to light the area around the residence and not glare off-site.
So they're meeting the conditions placed on by the planning department when it comes to shielding the lighting, then?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's a code requirement.
How about noise? I've heard a number of residents saying that someone's going to fire up their boat in the middle of the day, or, you know, someone might be cleaning their vehicle?
The proposed operational characteristics of the project are valet service, so the owners of the units that would be stored there wouldn't be able to come into the site and start them up or test them. The only time they'd be able to have access to them is when they pick them up at the location of the office.
So anybody that brings anything to their site does not have access to their vehicle, then?
No.
Okay. Does that mean the keys are taken from them, too?
We could ask that of the applicant.
Okay, okay. Queuing of vehicles, the stacking of vehicles was also addressed, too. Is there enough room on this site prior to the area where the valet takes over to queue a number of vehicles?
The turnaround area there and the internal roadway, we feel would accommodate the queuing of vehicles if a customer were to come into the site, and there were a number of vehicles queued up to, you know, expect their motorhomes or whatever they're getting. They'd be able to pull the vehicles around on the road to the right of the caretaker's residence and queue them at that location. I think that's the plan.
Okay, okay. How about the wall itself? I've driven by there and ridden my bike by there, and I notice there's quite a bit of graffiti on those walls right now, the green screen they have. When they build these walls, are they going to be non-porous, and are they going to be protected from graffiti? Because I understand from our own maintenance people that you can build walls, I think North County Transit's dealing with this, that are low-porous, porosity, and are covered with some type of paint that allows for easy removal of graffiti.
The spec for the walls is a masonry block, and they are required to put an anti-graffiti coating on those walls for the conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you. How about the attractiveness of the walls? What, I mean, these are going to be the city. It seems to me that we need to hold them to a higher standard.
There's pilaster space that, I think it's 40 feet, and, you know, the intent of the planning department was to landscape them to the extent practicable, so there's extensive landscaping in front of all the street frontages, and there's vines planted in front of the walls that are intended to grow up on the walls to eliminate that graffiti potential.
I think we need to hold them to a higher standard.
Okay.
Okay. The trees, the trees that they're going to place around the landscaping, that are placed around this facility, I understand they're going to have trees in the back of this facility, too, in between the houses?
That's correct.
I'd like to see that number doubled in consideration for the residents. The maintenance of that property, that setback area, how will they maintain that so grass doesn't grow inside there and become a fire hazard?
That's the applicant's responsibility, they could address that question.
That's already built into the application.
There's a condition of approval that's required that mandates there maintenance of that 5-foot strip.
Okay, okay. I think the applicant gave us an indication of what he potentially might do with this area last, six months ago, when he put all those trashy trucks on there and everything. I'm really concerned about that. So let's say this place is in operation, things aren't going well, he can't fill it up RVs, he wants to put some semis on there. How do we stop him?
There's a condition of approval in the resolution that limits what kind of storage he can have. If you give me one minute here, I can pull it up. It's number 25 on page 94. It states the storage facility is limited to the storage of recreational vehicles, boats- to the storage of recreational vehicles, boats, trailers, and other personal vehicles. No semi-trailers, construction trailers, or construction equipment, cargo containers, mobile homes, portable toilets, modular structures, or other non-vehicular items may be stored on-site. A forklift may be stored with a maintenance garage on-site for moving and staging vehicles and trailers.
So we can hold them to that?
Yes, sir.
Fair enough. How about, um, the economy's poor, people have their RV there, you know, they don't wanna pay anymore on it, so they just abandon it there. What's the procedure for removal of abandoned vehicles?
That would be a question for the applicant.
Okay. Pretty much hits everything that I've got so far. I do have, again, I wanna go back to what I hear over and over again about this being, uh, one of the major, uh, areas coming into our city and the attractiveness of this particular, uh, development. And, um, I can only stress that over and over again. I would hope that the, the, uh, the types of trees that they put in, the size of the trees they put in, are we, are we asking, are requiring of them the landscaping? I know landscaping's a little bit more than what required by code. Uh, how long will it take for these trees to mature?
Uh, from the visual simulations that were shown earlier, that's about a five-year maturity.
So, so for the next five years, they need to keep those walls clean?
That would be assumed, yes, sir.
Okay, I'll, I'll pass it on to someone else and then see. Mrs. Witter?
Okay, I just have, I, I did the same thing he did. I had, I wrote long lists here of, of questions, so, um, and, and just so you all know, I, I'm really concerned about the, the welfare of Vista and, and I've been agonizing over this for a week. I've been thinking about this and worrying about it and losing sleep over it, so, um, but this is, I'll just kinda go through the, the, the things that, that are, you know, bothering me or whatever. And one thing is that there's a trust factor here and the trust factor goes back to Mr. DeYoung and what you parked on the property previously, the, all the junk that was sitting there and the, and the graffiti fence, and so I, I have a trust factor with that, so, um, but anyway, so, um, my questions, okay. So, um, I guess the masonry wall, I want to see anti-graffiti coating on it until, until the landscape became more mature. I wanna see a lot of landscaping, so that, in your picture over there, it looks like, kinda like a park, you know, but I, I don't know how long it would take to look like a park, so I don't know what kinda containers, what size of containers would be of the plants, and I don't know, do I, who do I ask those, I don't know who I asked that question to, did I ask it to you or did I ask it to them, or?
What's the question, I'm sorry? What size of landscaping?
The containers and the plants, how can we get more, um, mature plants, you know, not just little-
The majority of plants along the, uh, street frontages and the property boundary would be thirty-six-inch box trees, which are a fairly large variety of tree. The size at, um, installation would be roughly twelve feet high with about a five-to-six-foot canopy for the normal trees.
And, and they're Canary pines, is that what they are?
The, the trees along the northern boundary adjacent to the residence would be Canary Island pines.
And is that because they, um, get so full? Is that, is that the reason you picked those?
They are fuller trees, they grow fairly quickly, and they're evergreen.
Evergreen and they hold, like, the noise, are kind of a noise buffer?
I wouldn't say that.
You wouldn't say that? Are they, you know, they said there was a problem with needles and pine cones and things, is that?
Any pine tree's gonna do that.
Do that, okay. Um, I don't know if there's another kinda tree that they would prefer, maybe somebody could meet with them and see if there's something we would better-
We can certainly ask our landscape architect. The city's landscape architect agreed that that was a good screening tree for the project.
Okay, and they're not, and they, um, and they're not a fire hazard type of a tree? Like, but I wanna ask the chief that?
If they were adequately maintained, I don't believe they would be a significant fire hazard.
And what does adequately maintained mean?
That means you clean up the dead pine needles underneath them and you keep the area below them free of weeds and other material that could combust.
Okay, um, okay, and then it, is there a berm, they say there's a berm at the back fence, or there's not a berm at the back fence?
There is not a berm at the back fence.
Would that, if there was a berm, would that help their site, you know, would that help cover the site a little more if we could do, I mean, did we talk about a berm like on, around the outside edges? Did we talk about the berm at all?
No, um, a berm could increase the screening of the property, it would just take away the usable portion of their land.
It would take more of the portion of their land, a little bit?
It would encroach more into their site because of the area that you'd have to construct the berm up and the slope it would create on the backside.
I know we did that with, um, Home Depot, we created kind of a berm and so that it was, you know, um, there. Um, okay, so I'm, I'm thinking I, I might like to see that. Um, some of their, you know, some of their things that, I mean, other use, I was trying to go, what other, you know, what other uses could be there? And I, I was thinking like supermarket, I, at one time they said a school, which would be pretty noisy, or a hotel, which I think would be, you know, a large box store like a Walmart or a Target or something, is that, would that, could that be built there?
Sure.
A large box store, or, um, a strip center, could you put fast food there?
Retail, restaurants, offices.
I, I, I'm not sure that this is, you know, I'm, I look at the choices, I'm not sure this is, you know, that, that bad a choice. I, I don't wanna see, when I drive into Vista, I would not like to see all RVs, but if we can screen it well enough, and there's lots of trees and things, and, and also screen it from the, the houses, then I don't know that would be such a big problem. Is there a way we could ask them to put the bigger, um, like, it's three levels, so it, it looks like there's a lower level which is screened on the outside, then there's a, a hill, and then there's, um, the next level, which looks like that's all screened by a bunch of trees also, is that, is that right? It looks like-
They're screening around all sides of it.
Screening everywhere.
The only areas-
The third level and there's more screening, right, along, along the edge, along the edge of the slope, right, or in the slope?
Our primary objective, um, is to screen it from public vantage points, so we've tried to do that to the maximum extent practicable. The second-story areas and the residences behind would likely have views of the property. There's very little you can do about that because they're sitting up above the wall.
Are you asking if they're screening within the project itself? Are there, is there any screening of trees or anything within the project?
Slopes that are in the central parti- portions-
In the middle.
Where the slopes are located, as you can see on the diagram, in the middle there, the two north-south trending slopes, those would be landscaped as well.
So there's landscaping all around the edges, that there's a lower level, then, then there's a, a slope, and then the next level, and on that slope, there's trees and screening.
That's correct.
Then we go to the, that level, then we go to the next level up, and then there's another slope, and then there's more trees and things there, and the only thing you could probably gonna see is the top level of the building, right? If I got that right?
Everything that is shaded with the smaller lines here would be landscaped, except for the streets, obviously, but, um, the white areas would have no landscaping.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You can go to the landscape diagram if you would, Marcy, it's two slides down.
I'm gonna be sure I understand it.
So you can see all the landscaping is the dark areas.
Okay. And, and, and the tree, are the trees far apart, you said eighteen feet apart, so if there's five foot of tree, five, ten, that, that leaves eight feet that there's no tree, is that how it goes?
At installation, that's how it goes, yes.
Installation, but the trees grow bigger and they kinda grow together?
That's the intent.
Okay, um, let's see, what are my other questions here? Um, all right, then, then I go to, I, I read in here that there were access keys, that they, people have access keys during hours, so I wanna know, and maybe this is a question for them, why would they would have access keys if they're, if it's-
Where did you read that there were access keys? I'm not sure, I remember that.
Just a minute, I'm gonna tell you. I read it on, I can have it right here. I read it in, I think it might have been in the, um, the remarks by, at the planning commission.
Okay.
And I'll tell you the page. Here it is, it's page, um, one-twenty-one of sixty, and it's kinda in the middle, and actually, actually, Commissioner Kramer said, um, the correct, the access keys, and it said, um, or pass keys. It says pass keys would function during the stated hours of operation. And the question to answer as to whether customers would be given pass keys, Mr. Giddings explained that they'd be given pass keys, but these pass keys would only function during the stated hours of operation. So then I was wondering-
There's a gated entry to the facility, which you'd need a key to get into, and so they would have pass keys that would only operate during that daytime hours of operation.
So that means they could come in and have access to their vehicles if they have a pass key?
They could come into the facility, go to the office, and the office would be responsible for going, getting the vehicle and bringing it out. They wouldn't have access to their vehicles, that's the understanding I have. We should probably get clarification from the applicant, that's the case.
But the gate, but the gate is, I mean, they'd be inside the gate. Once they have the pass key, they could come inside the gate, right, and if the guy's busy at the desk, they could just go out and-
Why don't we have the, the applicant come up and answer the question?
Somebody answer that for me, 'cause I just wondered why they would be-
Is someone from the applicant that could answer that question?
Talk to me about the pass keys. It's because I, I understood there's a valet, a valet-
Correct, that, that's correct. Mr. Rowe is, uh, our prospective operational manager.
I think there's a little misunderstanding. We will not be giving out pass keys for people to come in.
Okay.
When they wanna get their vehicle out, they call the day before and it'll be pulled out of the, out of the, uh, the yard, put in the staging area for them. They'll probably, they'll have a gate, like a man gate, that they can come in, they can park on the side there, or we'll have a bell that they could ring and it will open the gate for them to drive in.
Okay, so they don't have access to the gate?
No.
All right, so then my next question is, so they come in to get their, they come in, and they might, they come in in a car?
Mm-hmm.
So what happens to the car?
Uh, we can either park that in, in the spa, their space, back where they are.
So they have an assigned space for their thing?
Yeah, well, they, they don't really have an assigned space, but we can park their car. We have seventy, I think seventy-eight parking spaces there, which we're never gonna use for parking for their cars. A lot of people will take their cars and they tow them behind their RV.
Some people do.
Or, or if they come in, for, basically, there's sixty-three, sixty-three percent of the vehicles will be trailers, and those, they'll come in with a pickup truck, and we'll have a staging area, they will hook up to their, their trailer and then, and then leave. And the others will have boats, so they'll just come up to the staging area and hook up their boats. Only twenty percent of the business will be RVs, so everybody's got it kinda backwards, you know, it's just the way the makeup comes. But, 'cause you get more bang for your buck with the trailer, so there's more trailers than RVs.
How big of a staging area? It doesn't look like a very big staging area, how big-
We'll use the aisles right along here, right along where the office is.
And you just pull, you just went forward and they would take, and they bring their car in, you take their car and park it, and how many, how many, and like on a busy holiday, Labor Day or whatever, how many people would you have valeting?
Not, not that many. It, 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 you get, most of the use goes over the summer months. It goes up in the summer months, it goes down. Like, I think Mr. Giddings told you that, uh, the average use of an RV is only twenty-three days a year. That's for the whole year, whether they use it one week, one weekend, whatever. So most of the time, it just sits.
I have friends who do, who do off-road vehicles and they use them a lot.
Well, we don't have off-road vehicles in there.
So they can't store dune buggies and those kind of things there?
Not really.
In, in their trailers, if they're in their trailers, can they store-
If it's on a trailer, yes.
They can store-
You can put it on there.
In the trailer in there?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be, okay, I, it just seems like, it just seems like a, um-
And we don't, we don't allow people to work on them, do anything in there, but-
Start their motors, there's no-
No, no.
Generators running, there's-
Because it's primarily for security. We don't, we, we'll pull it out for them. And that way, there's no, no question about anybody getting inside of another person's vehicle. It's, it's basically for security.
Okay, so they won't be, they won't be, like, and no, and there's, no one's gonna occupy anything overnight, ever?
No, no, never. And as far as old, old vehicles, the unwritten rule is you don't take anything into store that you wouldn't wanna own, because you will own it.
It's easy to say that.
Uh, but you, you ever try to get rid of an RV? It's not like a car that you can take to ecology or pick apart. You have to cut it up, costs you about ten thousand dollars to get rid of it.
So that, so then if you say that, then they're gonna wanna bring it in there and park it?
Well, don't let them park it in there. You don't let them bring in old vehicles that are dilapidated.
What are you talking about, like, how much a month to, to park a, uh, one there? How much would it be, roughly?
It depends on the size.
So just, it goes up according to how big they are?
It goes by, it goes by size, and then the number of feet, millennial feet used.
Roughly, can you, can be, just a rough?
Will you give me a size?
Oh, what's the largest?
Forty feet.
Forty feet, thanks.
That's gonna be a little over two hundred dollars a month.
Okay, what about a boat? Isn't that the size?
It depends on the size. It goes by the, uh, the size of the boat-
And the trailer?
The trailer, and the stern drive of the boat, because it takes millennial feet.
Twenty-five feet.
Uh, about a little over a hundred dollars.
Okay, okay, that was, I guess that's, that's all, and then, so you, the cars will park in there, and you, and you charge extra to park your car and come pick up the yard?
No, no, we don't.
Nope, they can just put the car in.
It's just like an apartment. You, you, you pay for the space whether or not your vehicle's in there or not.
Okay. Um, would people be able to dump their trash there? Can they come in and dump off trash?
Uh, probably not. Most of them can dump, dump them at, at, there's, uh, sites along the highways that they have for that. We, we will have a dump site, but that's for their tanks, because you can't leave, you can't, you have to get the stuff out of the tanks, otherwise it-
Do you make them dump their tanks when they come in? Do they have to?
No, it's pretty much up to themselves, because if they don't, then their vehicle's gonna stink when they come back to it.
Yeah, I know, well, I, I know, that's what I was-
Ask Mr. Campbell, he owns, he owns an RV.
But I, but I would think you'd have to mandate, I would, I would, do you charge a dump? Is it extra charge to dump your tank?
Uh, we will, yes. Probably a nominal fee, five, ten dollars, something like that.
I think it should be mandatory to dump those things. Um, let's see, what else?
It's been my experience that everybody wants to dump. That's an added feature, because they're, they're at the end of their trip, they just want to, to clean out their tanks. You don't wanna leave stuff in there. Usually, sometimes they put pellets down inside there just to keep it smelling clean.
Okay, let me see. And then, I, they talked about vermin and I'm just, I, I would think you'd have as many vermin from trash receptacles from a, um, hotel or a, a store-
You mean, you're talking about-
They're talking about varmints, or they're-
We don't have varmints.
Oh, I know, but I'm, I mean, I think that they were thinking that that, that they're-
The worst thing, the worst thing actually is squirrels.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and that, you know, you just, there's not much you can do about those.
Okay, let me just see if there's anything else here that I have. Let me just return it up. I, I just think, I, one thing is, um, let me just see here, and no outside storage of any kinda containers, no junk, no nothing stored outside. I think John read that.
Correct.
I'm seeing if there's anything else here. No boxes. And the, and the trees will be planted, the landscaped, I mean, the landscape will be planted, they're not in boxes, so they're gonna pull them in and take them out all the time. Their, their trees are gonna be planted, permanent landscaping.
Yes, permanent landscaping, thirty-six-inch box trees, which is, as John pointed out, is quite a large-sized tree.
Okay, that's, I wanna be sure of that, Andrew. Um, let's see, I think I have most of my questions. Can you do the taller RVs and the lower, the lower level here, 'cause I think that's where the-
I think that was a good suggestion that we can certainly take a look at. There are some spots there where the grade is five feet below the start of the six-foot fence, so-
That would be maybe-
That, that's a reasonable recommendation and one we will certainly, um, take a look at.
Okay, I guess then that is pretty much, I, I, my thing is, I, I think it'll take a long, if, if we, if we don't approve this, I think it will take a long time for any retail, for this economy, for retail to come back into that area. I think we're gonna look at that fence and that, that for a long time, so I'm trying to find, uh, an option. But I, I would, I would like to see maybe a ten-to-fifteen-year SUP instead of a, you know, you're asking for thirty years, I think that that's too long. I, I would like to, 'cause I don't see the next quarter needs to be permanently be in our V storage unit, I, I, or a storage yard. I, per, personally, I wish that they would have, um, when they did our general plan, what, twenty years ago, or when they planned our city, that they would've planned some places for RVs to, to, in our city, which, which they didn't do, so, um, being that that, that's not, this would not be the choice where I would say, well, let's plan one right here. But, um, I think it might be an answer for maybe ten or fifteen years, and then maybe then we could go to another retail use or something.
We certainly understand your position on that, and, um, you know, this wasn't our first choice either. I, I can assure you of that. Uh, Mr. DeYoung, uh, tried to market this property for a number of years, and, um, this is a use that's, that is permitted by your zoning and general plan.
I see that.
Uh, and while I understand that we don't recognize this use as the ultimate use either, we recognize it as an interim use. Uh, we believe a thirty-year SUP is a, uh, probably a, a minimum requirement from our perspective, but I will tell you that, uh, you know, if a buyer came and, uh, and met our, our requirements, uh, we would sell.
Well, as a realtor, it's all cost, it's all about price, so, you know, so.
Hey, is that it? Uh, Mr. Campbell?
Don't go away. Don't go away. Don't go away. We're enjoying, enjoying your, helping us here understand this a little bit better. Um, you're going to have a wash area? Um, you're going to have a wash area?
Correct.
And, and that would be exteriors?
Yes.
And the water goes where?
Uh, goes...
There's a system, uh, we will be getting an industrial discharge permit, and it'll be fully permitted.
Okay, it won't be like in a, a car dealership where they recycle it through a system and reuse the water and things like that?
Uh, if that's required of us, we'll do it, but at this point, it hasn't been required of us.
Okay, and what if somebody says, well, I'd like you to also steam my engine?
No.
No, it, no steaming of engines, okay. Um, RVs are a lot like timeshares. Uh, you enjoy it for a season or two, and you wonder why the heck did I spend the money on this boat as, as RV? Um, and so you see a lot of them just parked, as you're right, they never get moved, so that brings the average down to pretty low usage per year. It would seem to me that, that over time, you're gonna say, gee, we've got hundreds of units out there, and we've got a lot of demand for consigning or selling. Uh, how do you propose to handle that?
Uh, we're not going into that business.
So you'll tell them to take it out someplace and consign it or sell it?
Yes, there's other places that do that.
Okay.
You have to have, I think, you may even have to have a car dealer's license to do that.
I don't know.
You don't?
I don't know.
We're not planning it.
And another thing is that, very popular is that people will say, I really don't wanna own one of those things, but I'd like to rent it. And that's very popular in, in, in this area even, and there's, uh, Ride America, whatever it's called, Drive America. Um, my son manages one of those in Northern California, has a hundred and fifty rental units.
Wow.
And so, um, is that something that you're going to consider?
Not here. I, I, there is one in Vista, uh, I said Vista Way, which runs, runs parallel to the north side of the freeway, right before you get to Emerald, you'll see some RVs parked there.
Yes, that's just a little private enterprise.
They're renting private vehicles. I don't know, I don't, I just, I don't see that as a good business model, because I'm afraid, what if they damage it? Who's the insurance? All the other headaches that go along with it?
I did that with several for a couple of years. It was, worked out, luckily. Where was I here? Okay, the question by the neighbors about overnight parking for people waiting to come in, I think quite often people come back out of the desert or someplace else, and they're arriving back in around eleven o'clock at night, so they'll, they'll quite possibly just park this thing in front of their home while I do the unloading, then bring it in the next day.
That's, that's, that's the normal procedure.
That's what you'll try and encourage?
Yes.
Okay. Um, a, as an owner of one of these beasts, I've got a forty-two-foot, four-hundred horsepower diesel. And it stands twelve foot six high. I know, because I've...
Correct.
Hit trees. Um, to, to properly maintain it, you have to run the engine and the generator once a month, and typically, to bring my engines up to temperatures, twenty minutes of running time, and the first five to ten minutes is pretty obnoxious, because it's doing two things. One, it's putting a lot of stuff out in the air, and number two, it's running at a higher RPM until it settles down into a temperature range. Um, also, in the process, the air systems are generating, are pumping air. And so the, the noise level is a little bit higher than your general operating noise, plus then the, the air quality. Um, are you going to provide a service as part of your valet that show, if I paid you, you'd go out and run my engines and...
No.
No, so what do I have to do as an owner?
You come take your vehicle out on the road.
But I can't take it out for probably five to ten minutes till it comes out?
Till it warms up, till you need it, but, but, but we don't get into that business of starting it, because that's one of the problems with the neighbors, is the noise.
Okay, I would think that, yeah, so that might have something to do with how...
If you do, I mean, like that.
Uh, please, uh, they were very polite when they listened to you, so I would expect the same from you. Um, I have a question that probably Mr. Giddings, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Lopez, appreciate that. My wife enjoyed sitting with you at that dinner the other evening.
One, one, one more thing, it's, mostly it's the diesel pushers that make the noise, it's not the gas.
That's right. That's correct. And even, even though everything on the thing complies with National Park standards, it's still, there it goes, you gotta run it.
Right.
Um, these are questions for you since you're representing our applicant. Um, over the years, and I suspect somebody's gonna either put out a book or a movie about Mr. DeYoung. He, he and his family are some of the most successful and energetic entrepreneurs in the United States, and that's a little known, he probably doesn't run around and boast that, but there's probably not much he hasn't undertaken and done well and succeeded at it. And, uh, I've learned a lot from Mr. DeYoung over the years, but over the years, um, I've, I've been, had some concerns. And that, for, and please clarify so I don't misspeak. I don't want anybody here to have the misimpression of what I, I believe is, I understood, and that is, across the street for some period of time, he had quite a collection of, of old, um, LA County or San Francisco County trash trucks that were, uh, being held for parts. Am I incorrect on that?
Uh, you're talking about another corner?
Right across on Sycamore, I don't...
I, I believe he did. At one time, as you know, he was in the trash business, and, uh, Mr. DeYoung is very well-known for making sure that he uses his vehicle to the maximum extent practicable, uh, to include, uh, using parts for other vehicles if need be.
And I've been known to do the same thing, but I don't have twenty of them in my yard. Uh, so i, if I'm correct, and this is just really for historical reference, Mr. DeYoung, not as a criticism, but did you not buy that when this was a county area to use as a, this is, I think, a very positive thought on your part, as a big farm? Is that correct? I mean, it's, it's a very entrepreneurial thing. It's not a negative comment, it's just, uh, it's just to demonstrate your, your tremendous entrepreneurial spirit.
My name's Ari DeYoung, and, um, I had, did own a trash company for about twenty-three years, and I started off with, uh, two trucks, two brooms, and two shovels. At a time when I sold the company to Waste Management, I had about a hundred trucks and I had a hundred and eighty-six people working for me. Uh, mode of operation that I have used in the past is, this is no disrespect to, um, municipalities, uh, but they seem to terminate their vehicles within a certain amount of time period, and they're really not worn out. So subsequently, through the years, uh, I would be at a new dealer, and I said, well, I may own this vehicle in about five years. And so subsequently, then I would refurbish it, and I'd make it last another ten, fifteen years. And because of that, um, nature, and me being able to have those types of capacities and talents to do those type of things, uh, it's worked out quite well for us. I have subsequently sold that business, I'm no longer in that business, and I don't intend to, intend to get back into it. As a matter of fact, uh, time does creep up on you, and there's only a certain amount of things that I can't buy, and that's time.
You know, this is all very interesting, but what does it have to do with what we're gonna discuss?
But so, the fact is, I think we're gonna run a good operation, and I think that we will be a complement to the City of Vista, because I'm cognizant of, uh, believe it or not, trying to be a good neighbor. And, and with all the, uh, businesses and entities we have had through the years, which is over fifty years now, I think generally we, we have been good neighbors and good operators. And that's about our philosophy.
Thank, thank you for raising the, the concern there. Was that, that, uh, if Mr. DeYoung has a large fleet of something somewhere, that it might end up in this, this facility? And that was my concern, that we'd have...
I understand.
A, a fleet of large vehicles. But that's not your intention to do that?
No.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mr. Campbell. Um, oh, before you leave, have you considered any other site to do this operation in that you could consider that would be less difficult for the community?
Not at this stage, because we believe this is a good location, it's a good site, uh, easy access for the public, and, um, and I think with our screening and everything and the requirements that the city has imposed upon us for this permitted use, uh, I think, um, this is really, uh, probably be an asset to the City of Vista, at least that's how we feel about it.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Conley, the trees that go along Palomarport Road are some, I don't know what they are, but they seem to be fairly successful in screening, and, and they're light and they're evergreen, and I don't know what they are, but, um, that, since you brought up that question. I agree with Mrs. Ritter on the thought of a berm below the wall to probably raise the wall structure to some point. I'd also like to see us consider, um, walls at the top of the slopes interior, so there'd be like two walls crossing from north to south that would, uh, in addition to the landscaping, block the view of whatever vehicles would be there, if in fact this is, uh, permitted use. And to retain all the landscape that you have proposed inside this, uh, this project. And I think you're correct, Mr. Lopez, improving the density of the trees along the north side would be only fair to the neighbors, but, and make, somehow keeping that five-foot path clear for maintenance purposes, I don't think that's, um, with the canary pines, your pine needles will just be a constant fire hazard and difficult to keep that thing in a safe condition, against wood fences in particular. And I don't think the backyards are that deep, are they from the residences?
No.
So that would be a question to the fire department. And Mr. DeYoung and I had talked about this for twenty years, and, uh, he appropriately put up commercial center coming soon signs, or something to that effect, you know, that for years, so that it, the neighbors would know, in fact, this is going to become a commercial center. Very wise thing to do, so nobody buying in the area would have any surprises, um, coming forward. I do have to state publicly, when Mr. Ryerson brought this to my attention as, as an option, my reaction was, you're kidding, uh, because I don't think it's appropriate in that neighborhood. And that's why I asked you if there's not some other sites you could do the same operation. It's needed, uh, everybody needs to store stuff, so why not do that? Mayor, that's basically my questions. Okay, I know that we have two more speakers, but, um, I think we've kinda discussed this thing to death, so could you please be brief, Mr. Gronky and Mr. Lopez?
Yeah, I, I just wanna make sure that the applicant was clear on my request for additional trees. I know staff wrote it down, but, okay.
Yes, we did note that, and we will certainly comply.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lopez?
Thank you. Uh, one of the things that, uh, one of the conditions that I'd like to see is that if any of the neighbors on, I believe it's, is it Opal, Opal Street? Those backyards, one of the condition be that, that, uh, you replace, if they want it, to replace the fencing along their property, the panels only, because those things are falling apart, and that would be my, my thing, that they replace that.
Okay, um, just a couple of comments. I happen to agree with the planning commission. I don't think it's an appropriate place for this use, and I, uh, feel as though that it's, as said, is the gateway to our community, and I think that, uh, I know the economy's down at this point, but, uh, it's not always gonna be down, and I think it, a better use can be, uh, found for that property. Another part of it, uh, because if we're gonna, if, if by chance it does pass, um, the five-foot, uh, space between the wall and the fence, now that goes all the way along those houses at Opal Ridge, there's actually a five-foot space between the wall of the, uh, intended use and the fence of the, uh, people in Opal Ridge?
Yes.
Okay, that, that seems just incomprehensible to me, because the fact, number one, canary pines, I don't care what you say, they're a torch. Pine needles fall down to the ground, but they don't fall, but most of them stay within the, the tree themselves, and, uh, they're not gonna cover much of anything, and they're gonna spread out in the, in the bunch that they're in, and it's gonna be hard to maintain. I cannot see for the life of me why you wanna put a five-foot space there that can't be maintained, and it won't be maintained. I know as much as the, the developer says it's gonna be maintained, it's not gonna be maintained, and, uh, you better provide a ladder for the police to go over there to catch the kids that are gonna be down in there as well. Um, I think the, the, the use is too intense, I don't think there's enough staging area, and, um, I'm not gonna vote for it. So with that, uh, I'd like to see some, one make a motion.
Well, I guess that's me. I'll go ahead and make a motion for, uh, staff recommendation on this site, um, voting for approval, and also with the conditions placed on it, that we placed on it tonight.
What conditions are those?
Can I get clarification on those? I have a lot of notes here. I have, um, the higher motorhomes parked in lower areas on the site. Better, the taller ones. Double trees along the northern boundary. Different trees and canary island pines. Uh, anti-graffiti coating, which is already in the conditions. A berm at the property line, there was some discussion about a berm, is that something that is part of the motion?
Mr. Gronky?
Yes.
Okay, that's part of the motion, I believe part of it.
My recommendation was for the asphalting of the entire site.
I don't have that in my notes.
Non-porous asphalt is what he said. I have, I have that. I also have the, um, mandatory dumping of motorhomes prior upon entry. One of, I mean, I'm just listing the things that you said, um, you, you, you need to say yes or no.
Is that what you said, Mr. Gronky?
Uh, okay, and then I have, um, applicant to replace fencing on the adjacent residential properties? That you'd like that to be part of your motion? And increase landscaping.
And a ten to fifteen-year SUP?
How, I mean, that's, that's kind of...
We're gonna have to look at whatever landscaping we could provide, I mean, maybe more dense landscaping, all those cities landscape park, we'll have to review that issue and see what can be provided in the way of additional landscaping. If there's a berm, there's some opportunity for it.
Okay.
Yeah, the berm, berm is kind of for shilling it better. Did you get the ten to fifteen years?
And ten to fifteen years, so is it ten years or fifteen years?
Fifteen. Mr. Gronky?
I'd just say, I'd just say ten, because I, I just think that in ten years, it'll be a different, um, different, different economy.
I'm looking for the maker of the motion to agree or not.
Your motion?
If, I think this will pass at fifteen, I would, I would love to see fifteen. Okay, I will save a fifteen then.
Fifteen-year SUP.
Uh, I, I look at this site, and I see that there's not that many site improvements, easily replaced, easily recovered within fifteen years.
Maybe it'll be a new council then?
I think everybody wants to come to some kind of decision tonight.
Do we wanna discuss this some more? I mean, it's, it's apparent, apparent that there's not an obvious agreement about what you want, so is there more discussion that, uh, you want on this subject?
I will express that. Uh, I think fifteen years is sufficient, because there's not that many site improvements. Those site improvements can be easily paid for within fifteen years, recovered, and, um, I, I would hope that we would find some other commercial use for this. I know Mr. Giddings said that if any buyer comes forward, but, um, I think we have an opportunity here to place some conditions on, just restrictions on this property.
And I think that there's, if you want, um, and on the process here, there's nine conditions that you've listed that I have down. Uh, Mr. Conley, is that...
I have nine.
You have nine, and so I think that that, um, council maybe want, you want to address that with the applicant at this time.
And, Mr. Mayor, we, we should, uh, permit the applicant to speak to the issue of amortization of their investment.
I think so too, uh, so if you'd like to.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, counsel. Uh, of, of the additional conditions that you've discussed this evening, I think there are only two that we, we have an issue with. Uh, the first is the, uh, the reduced time for the SUP. Uh, based on our analysis, uh, we believe thirty years is, is what we would need. Uh, the other thing is the asphalting of the entire site, um, is actually, while I know it, 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 it sounds like it would be a smart move, uh, we worked with staff on this, and I, and John, please correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, we came to the conclusion that it, it was actually a preferred, uh, use not to asphalt the entire site. We would dramatically reduce the runoff by leaving a, a significant amount of the site in, in basically DG or gravel, and John, feel free to, correct me if I'm, if I've mistaken.
No, that's accurate.
I'm concerned about the, um, possible pollutants of the soil underneath it from leakage I'm concerned about the possible pollutants of the soil underneath it from leakage from the vehicles.
Well, we understand that, but the problem is, when you put the vehicles on asphalt, you have the same problem except it concentrates it versus being able to go in and if you do have a, if you do discover a vehicle that's leaking, you can go in, take the gravel out, take the dirt under the gravel out and get rid of it at that spot.
So there's a major cost involved that makes...
Well, it's not a major cost in the total scheme of things, but it, you can deal with that particular vehicle directly on that location.
I know. So you'd be able to remediate the soil, no problem?
I'm sorry?
You'd be able to remediate the soil?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, I will, I remove that condition then.
I'll go with everything except for the special use requirement, I won't go with 30 years.
Maker of the motion, you've...
Do a second.
You have a second to the motion?
Who's a second?
Pardon? There is no second, I said, is there a second?
Are you saying 30 years?
I'd like to see that, can the cost in development, if they're up to 20 years?
Going once, going twice? Mr. Campbell, did you have something that you wanted to...
Most of it is 15.
Well, finish that and I have a question.
Well, Mr. Gronk, now have you, your motion is those nine, or eight conditions?
Right.
And the 15-year and that's second and by duty, okay? We have a motion and a second. Okay, discussion, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. To Mr. Gronk, maker of the motion, diesels are obnoxious things. I would ask you to consider keeping diesels 150-foot away from residential property lines and add that to your conditions. Yes, that puts them nearly halfway across towards Sycamore and away from residences, where they're really a nasty thing to beat. I think, I think it's, unless you have some...
No, no, we would agree to that condition.
Okay, free from residents, thank you. Mr. Lopez?
The gravel part, I think is a part that I agree with the staff, because one of the things that you do in asphalt, and asphalt, when it rains...
Okay with that.
Yeah, okay, so I'm okay with that. I still think the cost of producing the project in over 20 years, what cost?
I don't think it's anymore. Mr. Campbell?
I just want to explain my vote before we vote.
If it would help the council in your decision-making, we would agree with 20 years.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Campbell, did you have a comment?
I think it's only fair that I explain my vote. I'll be voting no against this project. I think it's the wrong project in the wrong place. It's not that it's not a needed project, it's not that a best effort wouldn't be made to do this in a very nice way. And I entrust Mr. DeYoung's integrity to maintain it and Mr. Lowe's ability to manage it properly, but I think it's a disservice to the community of Vista, not only those people on Opal Ridge, but it's not really in keeping with the vision we've had for years and even Mr. DeYoung's vision to have this type of facility in that location, so I'll be voting no.
Can I say one other thing, Mr. Minnich?
Sure. Mr. Lopez?
One of the things I was here at the last meeting and what disturbed me the most about the, about this particular project and the project across the street was that the neighbors that live right next to the hotel that's going in complained about, that's a two-story or whatever the height was there and they would be looking, no matter what size fence they put in, they'll be looking into their backyards there, into their yards. They frowned against that, okay, they did not want that. In this project, you have a fence that's back there, which you want these motorhomes to be lower than the fence and when you have less noise, less people looking, I would rather have less people looking into my home. I would rather be looking down into something than looking into my home. So to me, when you look at this type of project, who knows, the neighbors would probably... I don't know, yes, but to me, I would rather have a project that they're not looking into my backyard. That I would rather look down into somebody else than them looking into my backyard. Because it's just, it just, I don't feel safe that way. And so when you, you could put commercial in this, you could put a hotel, you could have restaurants and bars making noise here, that would be a problem to me, living there. So when I see something more calm, less traffic, nice landscape, and I'll assure you with Mr. Conley being here, it will be a nice landscape and it will be well done. So I will be voting for this project, but I would like to see the 20 years and this end over with.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second and everyone understands the motion. It's the nine now, the additions, including a 15-year SUP. Understood, Mr. Gittins?
We understand that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Don't necessarily agree with it, but we do understand it.
Great. Everyone cast their votes. Okay, the motion passes, no, it does not pass.
Frankie voted no.
Okay. Okay. The matter is concluded. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda is oral communications. Is Mr. Dustin McNamara here? Looks like a bunch of silly... We may not be done, so please, if you might want to stay and take a seat. We're in a short recess here and it'll be just a moment. Mr. Mayor? Mayor, if I may? No, we're in a recess, Mr.... Okay. Mr. Hallis, we're in a recess, so if you just have a seat, you'll be right. You're absolutely right. Was part of your motion to close the public hearing? Yeah, one thing we didn't do is close the public hearing.
Okay, so we have not closed the public hearing.
We have not closed the public hearing, as was brought to our attention. I'm sorry, that's my fault for not catching that. So, Mr. City Attorney, how do we get out of this mess?
Well, I don't know precisely what the council wishes to do, but I can tell you that Mr. Lopez wishes... It's actually on, I'll get closer. Mr. Lopez would like to make a motion to reconsider the motion. He would need a second and that would be a reconsideration of the motion for the 15 years. And the council could entertain that and perhaps this time the motion could also include closing the public hearing, which does remain open at the moment.
Side oversight.
Yes, but one of the persons voting yes would have to make the motion. Or actually, since the motion failed, one of the persons voting no would have to make the motion and that includes Mr. Lopez, so he can make that motion.
Mr. Lopez, do you wish to make a motion?
What happened here on this was that I voted according to, I was going for against the...
You just need to make a motion, you don't need to explain it. You just need to make a motion.
Motion would be to extend that...
To reconsider.
Reconsider for a...
No, just reconsider, is all you need to make a motion for. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second his motion.
There's a motion and a second to reconsider. Please reconsider the item. Okay, please cast your votes. Please cast and close the public hearing.
It would have to be a yes.
And close the public hearing.
Well, technically, this is a motion to reconsider and then we'll revote the motion itself.
Yes.
Okay. The motion to reconsider passes on a three-to-two vote, with Campbell and Vance voting no. Okay, then it's up to, Mr. Lopez, do you wish to make another motion?
I would like to go with the nine, with the nine that they had, but extend that 15 to 20 years.
He needs a second for the motion, so if there is no second, then one of the other persons may wish to renew their other motion.
Okay, that motion fails to pass with, for lack of a second. Is there another motion that you wish to make to either approve or deny the project? Yeah, we do, we're reconsidering it. And close the public hearing for any success.
I will make a motion for the 15-year agreement, also with the additional recommendations or changes that we, that the staff agreed to and the applicant agreed to. And close the public hearing.
That's fine.
Now, is that a second?
That's a second.
Mr. Lopez has issued a second. Okay, so that's for the nine conditions as well as a 15-year SUP. Is that clear, Mr. Conley?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, is that clear to the applicants?
That is clear, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right. Cast your votes. That passes with a three-to vote, with Campbell and Vance still voting no and it's for a 15-year yet SUP. And I do apologize to the audience for this, the way this was handled. And the matter is now closed. All right. Mr. McNamara, are you here in the audience? Okay. We have next remarks from the City Council and from the City Attorney first. Any remarks or reports?
Since this is our last meeting for the year, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone.
Okay, Mrs. Gelder.
I echo those comments and hope that our holidays period will bring some sense to the legislature and they'll do something about the state budget and we'll know what our funding will be for the next year.
Okay, I too wish to, wish everyone a happy, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Mr. Gronk?
I wish everybody a Happy New Year. I also want to say I'm happy to be back, but after tonight, I might reserve that.
Mrs. Ritter?
I wish everybody happy holidays also and say I'll see you all next year.
Okay, Mr. Campbell?
Hey, Mayor, I hope everybody's happy, but also I'd like to see everybody healthy and be back here again next year.
Okay, Mr. Lopez?
Thank you very much. Happy holidays to all of you and we have a lot of work ahead of us next year and happy holidays.
This meeting is adjourned.